Call to order, regular meeting of the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education, June 23, 2022. It is 6:31 PM. Please take attendance.
All board members are present.
All right, please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to 2A, announcement of the 2022-23 Board Interns and Student Advisory Council. Lisa?
Okay, well, I have the privilege of announcing our 2022-23 Board Interns and Student Advisory Committee Council, sorry. The Board Intern Committee really wants to first and foremost extend our appreciation to all 28 applicants for giving their time and for interviewing and submitting detailed applications and resumes. Every year it was a difficult decision and every single one was overly qualified, but here they go. This year, we have three Board Interns. They are Madeline Clements, Dia Ramesh, and Fiona Ruby. We also have six Student Advisory Council members. They are Sidney Butler, Eileen Shea, Henry Jackson, Stephen Macaj, Nisha Singy, and Natalie Simone.
All right, we will move on to three public comments. Read our public comment sheet. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. It is not a time for dialogue. In the interest of time, the Open Meetings Act provides that boards may place limits on the time allotment for an individual comment. In addition to making a public comment, you may also email the board at any time. Any comment that contains profanity, threats, defamatory remarks, or is directed at any person not employed by the district or member of the Board of Education in their official capacity and related to the roles and responsibilities for which they are employed or serve or is otherwise exempt from First Amendment protection will be excluded from public comment. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, please identify who you represent. Thank you for taking the time to address the BHS Board of Education. First up, Anthony Agby.
Mr. President, did you save the time?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
How long do I have?
Three minutes, sir.
Three minutes, okay. First of all, I want to thank you for hearing me out. I was here about three months ago, almost to the day, to notify you the Board of what I believe is a, well, it's a fact that there was an alleged sexual assault on campus in this closet in the school back on September 30th. Was my daughter, but it's still one of all of our daughters, the school district. Reason I brought that up is because sequentially, about two weeks after my daughter was raped by the same, allegedly raped, I'll say, by the same individual, because he was still walking the schools, being a predator, and got to know my daughter and enticed her into a relationship where he abused her. I will say, last time I spoke, my comments did get edited. I was pretty disappointed with that. This is a public forum. I thought my public comments should be made public and not edited. I don't remember saying anything besides administrators. I'm okay to say administrator names, correct, without being edited? Just for clarify.
You can't reference minors and give identifying information about minors.
Okay, and I did not mention any minors at that meeting. I don't recall, because I didn't mention the victim or the perpetrator in that regard. So today's, I'll say, the 50th anniversary Title IX. I think that's great. We have a Title IX coordinator, and this was, this alleged act happened, and I was told I was going to be notified by the Title IX coordinator and spoken with. Still don't know who this individual man or woman is. So I did you guys a disservice by informing you of this assault, because it's a disservice because you guys didn't do anything about it. I informed you, if you weren't knowledgeable about it, that shame on the administration to not notify you. But once I notified you three months, nothing has occurred. The district's not any safer. It's actually riskier. It's less safe for these individuals to walk to schools. Why? Because they know nobody's going to support them and do anything to protect them. I mentioned to the administrator, Mr. Reed Norwell, on several occasions, I talked to him about this incident. He told me that it was a fact, not a sexual assault that occurred. Now, I thought it was a school policy that an administrator cannot talk about another individual's case. He did say that. He was judge and jury, and I'm going to share with this, with you. I want to hear this audio that I had with him, and I want you to know what the administration is and how this affects the community. And here's Mr. Reed Norwell. Pardon me?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Could you hold for one second?
Sure.
Pause the time.
It's the audio I sent to you folks, too, earlier today. I think it needs to be made public. If we're going to cover it up, too, that's up to you guys.
I'm not sure that you can record someone without their permission.
Oh, I have their permission, absolutely, and he's aware of it. He actually commented on my third meeting that Mr. Agby records everything when Mr. Stroud was in the meeting. Said, "Mr. Agby records everything." I said, "I sure do." So I have proof about what people say, so it's no longer hearsay. But I'll wait to hear you guys say, if I can't admit it, again, this is a whole, this has been my problem with this administration, the school board, is it's all secret. You guys don't want anyone to know. You want to keep covering it up, brushing it under the rug, just like the administration did. He told me that it was not sexual assault. He said they would kick someone out if there was assault on campus. That goes against what I've been heard.
Sir, if you could just hold your comments until a decision comes from our president.
Do you have a recording of him saying it was okay to record?
Sure. I'll share the recording with you. If you want to wait until another time for me to share that with you, I just want it to be known on the record that he told me that it was not sexual assault, and if it were assault, and he told me, actually, I quote, I sent you the quote today, that I was misinformed.
What, sir, Mr. President, recommendation, if the gentleman is willing to hold the recording for the next meeting, maybe we talk to our legal counsel and talk to the employee through our administration, and then if they say that it's permissible to have him play it in the public comment, then we can do it at the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine. You can restart the time.
Okay. You have 34 seconds left, sir.
Okay, I'd just like to know what the rules are up here for public comment. It seems like there's a lot of rules. You know, and one of the things I was furious with the administration, now I'm furious with you all, is a lack of transparency. And it's things, exactly things like this that make people skeptical. We had a racial incident last fall. You guys heard everyone talk about it. I went back and watched the video. Not one of those comments were edited, and there were names that were named in there that were not part of the administration. You went full course. Maybe I'm not the right class that you need to edit or you don't edit, but I think everyone needs to be treated fairly. The racial inquiry, there was no criminal.
Can you wrap it up, sir?
Are you serious?
Can you?
There was no criminal investigation that I know of, yet you guys went all out to have community.
Sir, if you can wrap it up.
I'm wrapping it up. You asked me to. You guys keep interrupting me.
No, no, no. You had three minutes. You're at 3 minutes and 15 seconds.
Okay.
So please wrap it up.
Can I have a couple of extra minutes? There's only a few different people commenting.
No, sir, we have a three-minute limit. Thank you very much for your comment.
Okay, so I'll wrap it up, then. I ask you guys to acknowledge.
No, no, thank you, sir.
To acknowledge that it occurred.
Sir, thank you.
To, you need to legitimize the victims.
Sir, we're not going to give him extra time?
You need to protect the students.
We've never given anyone extra time.
Sir, time now.
Sir, it's three, it's a three-minute limit. I'm the time, if the president would like to give it extra time, fine. No, that doesn't, it doesn't work that way, ma'am. It's only one person at a time.
This is the way you guys.
Mr. President. You can finish your comment.
As I was on city council, I know what it is. You guys want to limit our free speech is one thing. I was on Berkeley City Council. I never edited it. I let people go over as respect to them. This is a crime, a rape that occurred in the school, and you're trying to silence me and everyone else. You're doing exactly what, you're the slackie for the administration. All I'm asking you is to give us the respect that our students did. My daughter was raped because you're in action. This girl was raped. The schools are still, the doors are still not locked, and the closets. I sent you videos. I sent you videos. The kid still roams the school, still roams the halls. I sent you videos. I informed them, now I'll tone it down, sorry. I informed the administration that this guy's walking the halls, intimidating my daughters, intimidating other victims, and it's unacceptable. So I'm saying, it's been nine months. There's been no acknowledgement.
Okay, sir.
That the incident ever happened. Two more sentences. I'm asking you to acknowledge that it occurred. Simple. You acknowledge everything else. If there's EMS at the school, you tell everyone. If there's a rape in the school, please acknowledge it. If you need to legitimize the victims, you need to protect the students and lock the damn doors. That's all I'm asking. And by the way, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kaitlyn Scholl, and I'm going to be a senior next year. I'm unsure what school I am planning to attend, but the matters I am discussing occurred at Bloomfield Hills High School. As you know, there was a sexual assault in a classroom storage closet that was poorly dealt with by high school administration. I am the victim who has dealt with the repercussions for months. To begin, incorrect information has been spread about my story, so I would like to first address the false rumors. It was not consensual and entirely not something I wanted to engage in. I said no numerous times, but it is immensely challenging to leave a room when a boy who is physically bigger than you is blocking the only exit. Initially, I was hesitant to share my testimony due to the stigma surrounding victims and fear of rejection that my story would not be believed. Unfortunately, my concerns became a reality when I came forward with my experience. A few days following the incident, I communicated the situation to the administration staff. Informed that an investigation would be held, I was under the impression my school was correctly approaching the crime committed against me. At the same time, my administrator proceeded to attempt to convince my parents it was consensual and classified the entire situation as behavior both of us wanted. The manner the situation was handled made absolutely no sense. After weeks of waiting, the administration suggested creating a police report, but disclosed absolutely nothing surrounding the previous investigation. Eventually, I discovered it never occurred, meaning I had minimal proof to defend myself, resulting in my police case report being dropped. The most frustrating aspect is that evidence was present, but the school failed to gather it, meaning I could have legally proceeded, but the opportunity was taken from me. I can confidently say that Bloomfield Hills High School destroyed my chance of receiving justice. According to the Uniform Code of Student Conduct, there is an entire protocol that indepthly describes a process to follow to manage sexual harassment. Minimal parts of the policy were initiated, which appears to be a common theme for conflicts in the district. For example, two days following the investigation, a meeting is supposed to be held to discuss the materials discussed, or discovered, excuse me. In my case, there was no conference. In fact, there was absolutely nothing. The problem appeared to lack value to the administrators and was improperly dealt with. I would like to spend the remainder of my time explaining the negative effects I have endured to display the severity of the conditions. It is a common misconception that after an incident, life returns to normal, but that is far from reality. Every day, I encountered an individual that violated me both physically and mentally without assistance from the administration staff. I have experienced extreme fear of simply going to school considering I have either been harassed or had anxiety attacks after seeing the boy. Unfortunately, it got to the point where I stopped attending school, causing my grades as well as mental health to drop. I am by no means utilizing this experience as a method to skip class. Before the situation, I was an all A student. I rarely received absences, and most importantly...
30 seconds.
And most importantly, I loved learning, so this was drastically out of character. I believe that if the circumstances were managed differently, I would have discovered coping mechanisms to better manage my feelings, and overall, there would have been a better outcome. To proceed, I have been called a liar or a slut in response to the boy changing the truth. I genuinely struggle to comprehend why individuals believe I am untruthful due to the fact that he has reportedly violated multiple young women who all possess strong testimonies. To conclude, I have been suffering and am not willing to quit until I receive justice, not only for myself, but for the several other victims as well. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Caitlyn. Megan Scholl?
Well, that's obviously my kid, and I couldn't be more proud of what she just did. And this is, the way this is conducted is beyond me. Like, you have a sexual assault that occurred on school grounds, and I've never seen anything swept under the rug quite like I have this. The ball was dropped from the very beginning when I got a phone call from Jessica Lapone, who portrayed a different event than what actually took place. I was never, she, her dad wasn't contacted. I was told to call her dad. We were never brought in to discuss this. We weren't given the appropriate resources at school for her to go back safely. I had to get my own social worker outside of the school to bring in so that we could use the school social worker, and she could use the anxiety room, and she could get through her day. But this is after she suffered these last few months trying to go to school under these circumstances. This kid and his friends continue to harass these young ladies. Some of them have a PPO. Recent, at the end of the school year, they were supposedly to take away his unstructured time to keep her, keep him away from the girls, and that did not happen. They still saw him frequently. He would go to their classes and bother them, bother them in lunch. So clearly, nothing was handled. The doors are, like Mr. Agby said, the doors are still unlocked. You can walk in that schoolroom to the exact room that she was assaulted in, and it's still unlocked. And you guys have done nothing. You know, you've known about this for months. There's other victims, not even our two girls, and we've done nothing as a district. There's nothing, you know, this is horrible stigma out there. Nothing's gone to help, you know, for sexual assault cases or suicide victims, mental health, all that. No, I mean, focus on the racism. I get that, but there's a, this was the same time that this was going on, and nothing was done. So I would just appreciate, from now going forward, that there's some action that's taken, and so that we can make it safe for these young ladies. And I'm out, I'm done before my time.
Good evening. Stephanie Kreider, you all know me. For many years, I've come before this board, actually have been, at times, very proud of you sitting up here because I know that I advocated for many of you to be where you're sitting today. I'm very disappointed that this is another year that I have to come to this podium on the record and say that I have been made aware that there are still allegations of physical and sexual assault at the high school. While I do understand that what the two families here tonight have indicated occurred before our current principal, it is disappointing to me that when I'm contacted by another community member and then subsequently I follow up with these families to find out what support that they need, that I am told that the protocols haven't even been followed by the school. And what do I mean by that? I'm always told to tell families to make sure you follow the chain of command, and it sounds like the chain of command wasn't even followed, not only when they reported these incidents, but even up to the point that I spoke to them. One mom hadn't even spoken to the new principal yet. It appears to me that someone hadn't even informed him and given him all of the information. If that is the case, I will ask you to find out and ask those individuals who have been involved, whether it's, excuse me, whether it's the teacher, the counselor, or the associate principal, who maybe did not tell that principal, find out why that occurred, and let's fix these gaps and these issues. In 2022, I met with David Reed Norwood, a family, a mom and a child. That child was dismissed by staff at the high school. He witnessed a sexual assault. There were messages that were sent that went unanswered to. That mom contacted me. I advocated for her. We met with David. That meeting didn't go so well, so we then went to meet with Pat Watson. I explained to Pat at that time that this was not the only time that I had heard about these incidents and that I am expecting that these Title IX issues be addressed. I understand, I think from the website, that Keith McDonald is the Title IX coordinator. If that is not true, please make that statement tonight so these families know who the coordinator is. You've had students come before you as this current board.
30 seconds.
And they have said, as students in the LGBTQ community, that they have experienced physical and sexual assault. That's not opinion. That's not hearsay. I watched them and heard them myself. That was at a televised school board meeting. Why are we still here today talking about these issues? It is your responsibility to hold the administration accountable so that these children are safe when they go to school.
Can you wrap it up, please?
If these children cannot be safe, we will mobilize, and we will do everything necessary to let everybody know that in Bloomfield Hills School District.
Can you wrap it up, please?
That children are not safe. I have been in contact with someone.
Please wrap it up, ma'am.
With the Michigan Department of Civil Rights.
Ma'am.
We will be in contact with somebody at the Attorney General's Office.
Ma'am, thank you very much for your time.
If these families do not get what they need, everyone will be held accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more further comment. Move to number four, closed session. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education convene in a closed session per MCL 15.268, Section 8C, collective bargaining strategies as requested by Keith McDonald.
Second.
Second.
What was in favor?
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Howard?
Yes.
Sorry, Paul?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Silva?
Yes.
Mr. President, if you can explain to the public what the process is at this point?
Certainly. We're going to take a brief break to discuss a collective bargaining.
So we will reconvene after we are finished with the closed session?
We'll reconvene after we are finished with the closed session. Okay. [inaudible] Everybody here? All right. Let's reconvene. Oh, Board President's Report, number six. Okay, back in session. Number six, Board President's Report. Still not quite sure what to do with the President's Report, so I'll continue in Paul's tradition of highlighting student achievement and community pride. Start with Alexandria Baldi, won first place in the high school 3D art category at the Justice for All Art Competition, and Christine Baldi took home second place in the same category. I also want to thank all of our local places of worship for hosting our seventh graders this school year as part of our seventh grade program to introduce world religions, celebrates our differences, and encourages understanding and inclusivity. And lastly, our varsity girls soccer team took home the Division I state championship last Friday against Northville, which was the number-one-ranked team heading into the playoffs, and they beat last year's state champ and number-three-ranked team, Heartland, in the quarterfinal match. They finished their season with eight straight wins and were undefeated for 15 straight to close the season. Congrats. All right. Number seven, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Van Gemmer. A couple of things. One, on August 2 of 2022, voters in Bloomfield Hills Schools will be asked to consider a proposal to restore the non-Homestead operation in the millage. Passage is necessary for Bloomfield Schools to receive full revenue per pupil. The majority of families of Bloomfield Hills Schools qualify for the principal residence exemption. It will not be affected by the restoration of two mills. The tax rate for non-principal resident exception properties, like business and rental property owners, will not increase. No levy increase, current tax rate of 18 mills since 2000. More information can be found on the district's website under the millage. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Class of 2022. This is a class that has excelled in arts, activities, athletics, and academics. As our seniors move on, some are going to the military, some are going to the workforce, some are taking a gap year, and many are moving on to college. This has been an extremely successful college application cycle for the Class of 2022. Seventy-nine percent of our seniors who applied to Michigan State University were accepted. Twenty-five percent of our seniors who applied to the University of Michigan were accepted. We also had seniors who were admitted to the following universities. I won't read every school they've been, you know, admitted to, but just to give you a flavor of some of our seniors' accomplishments. We had seniors this year admitted to Brown, Yale, Cornell, Columbia, the University of Pennsylvania, MIT, Northwestern, NYU, the University of Chicago, USC, Vanderbilt, Cal Berkeley, Tulane, Washington University St. Louis, Georgetown, Tufts, Villanova, Boston University, UCLA, Bernard College, Carnegie Mellon, Colgate, Emory, Georgia Tech, and the list goes on and on. So congratulations to all of our seniors in the Class of 2022, remarkable group of young people. And I know we all had the privilege to get to know many of them. Then, of course, our Board Interns, and we know how great they were.
Mr. Ross, were there not many Michigan institutions that...
Our students are attending?
No, we have students going to Kalamazoo College, Yenna Heights, EMU, CMU, Western Michigan, Grand Valley State University, Oakland University, Lawrence Tech University. I mentioned just some of the out-of-state ones, and then also mentioned the ones...
U of M, MSU.
I mentioned those two.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. I apologize.
So seventy-nine percent of our seniors who applied to Michigan State were admitted, and twenty-five percent of our seniors who applied to the University of Michigan were accepted. And, you know, thanks to the Common App, we are seeing the increase in the amount of schools students apply to. For example, looking at the University of Michigan, last year, they received over 83,000 applicants to the university, to give you an idea of some of the changes there. We also celebrated so many other end-of-the-year activities in our school district, the move-up days, the clapouts. I know I got to hang out with my fourth-grade buddies at Cone it for the clapout, and that was amazing. Graduations, and then the return of the DC trip. In the fall, we welcome a new group of kindergartners, and I really can't get over this. So be prepared. The Class of 2035 will start in the fall. So I'm not sure when everyone at this table graduated, but it kind of hit me to see the Class of 2035 will start in the fall. So President Van Gemmer, thank you. That's my update.
Thank you so much for that.
Okay, moving on to number eight, which is ratification of the Bloomfield Hills Education Association Agreement. Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Bloomfield Hills Education Association, BHEA, as presented.
Second. Discussion. Oh, Keith, go ahead.
First, I'll thank you. My daughter's still not in kindergarten yet, so 2036, I just did the math. That's a long ways away. I'm up here tonight to, you guys are all laughing at me, aren't you? Not with me.
With you.
You're with me, with me.
We are so with you. You just don't know it.
I am up here very pleased to bring forward a couple of different contracts today, the first of which is the BHEA. The BHEA covers all of our certified instructional staff, and that includes our psych, social workers, professions like that, counselors. That contract is negotiated through an IBB, or Interest-Based Bargaining Process. It's a timely process, but as one is extremely collaborative. This process really proved to be so. Great conversation, problem-solving that happened at the table, and both sides were very thrilled with the end result. So that is what you have before you today.
Thanks, Keith. Any questions? All right. Should we do a roll call?
Just all those in favor.
No.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Howard?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Silva?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
I abstain based on conflict.
I also abstain.
So the vote was?
The vote was 5-0. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the amazing amount of work that it took.
Thank you.
And to revamp a lot of archaic things that hadn't been looked at in a long time.
And for the bargain unit, not just for Keith, but it was for the bargain unit, too.
At this time, I want to bring up Emily Handy. She's one of their main negotiators on their team. She was able to be here today. Many people, as you know, as soon as schools outtake the opportunity to get out of town, so. But Emily and her two lovely young kids are here, but I know Emily wanted to say a couple of words.
Good evening. As Keith said, I'm Emily Handy, and I'm the vice president of the BHEA, also math teacher leader for the district. It's already been mentioned that, you know, bargaining is a grueling process. I've been... It's already been mentioned that, you know, bargaining is a grueling process. I've been with the district 10 years, and I've bargained in one form or another each of those 10 years. But I have to say that this contract is one that I'm just really proud of. We're really excited for it. We think it's going to do what it needs to do to attract and retain our valuable educators, so thank you.
What classes are they going to be in?
So we have a, what was it, 2035. Betsy will be in kindergarten next year, and William's going into third grade, so 2032.
You did your math very quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is number nine, ratification of administrative council agreement. Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Administrative Council as presented.
Second.
Keith?
All right. Again, the second of the contracts that we are bringing forward today is that with the Administrative Council. Administrative Council is a group of building-level administrators and some central office administrators. It's one of our smaller bargaining units that we have in the district, right around 20 members. We have negotiated a three-year contract, which you have presented today.
Thank you. Is anyone here?
There is nobody here to represent them tonight. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Wait, did we get a second?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Seven-zero?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
All right, next up is number 10, Consent Agenda. Jennifer?
I move the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from the regular meeting of May 24, 2022. Request to approve minutes from closed sessions and study session of June 9, 2022. Request to approve dispersment reports from Tina Kostick, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education approve the dispersment reports as presented. Request to approve monthly financial reports from Tina Kostick, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education approve the financial reports as presented. Request to approve HR actions from Keith McDonald, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Title IX Coordinator. I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented. Request to approve food services management contract renewal from Tina Kostick, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education approve the food service management contract renewal with Aramark Educational Services LLC to provide food services management for the 2022-23 fiscal year. Request to approve Metro Bureau membership for 2022-23 from Pat Watson, Superintendent. I move that the Board of Education approve the organizational membership with the Metro Bureau in the amount of $2,926.25 for the 2022-23 school year. Request to approve Michigan High School Athletic Association membership for 2022-23 from Mike Cowdery, Director of Athletics and Recreation. I move that the Board of Education approve membership in the Michigan High School Athletic Association for the 2022-23 school year. Request to approve the Michigan Association of School Boards membership for 2022-23 from Pat Watson, Superintendent. I move that the Board of Education approve membership in the Michigan Association of School Boards for the 2022-23 school year in the amount of $8,660. Request to designate school safety liaison for 2022-23 from Pat Watson, Superintendent. I move the Board of Education designate Patrick Sidge, Administrator of Public Safety, as Bloomfield Hills Schools' appointed school safety liaison to work with the Michigan School Safety Commission as required annually by Public Act 549, MCL 380.1241.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven-zero. I'll move on to number 11, which is the public hearing. Public hearing on adoption of the fiscal year 2022-23 budget and 2022 tax rates.
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Chairman. Maybe Ms. Kostick knows, I'm not sure. On a public hearing, I believe we have to have a public comment, period. That kind of differentiates between a public hearing and just a regular agenda item. Is... Do you know for a fact? I'm not sure.
Well, if I was in front of my computer, I would quickly look at last year's agenda and the year prior. I don't remember a separate public comment, but I'm not certain.
Put it this way, if we do a public comment, I'm not sure whether anyone is here for that, but we could, that way, cover our bases.
All right. John can ask after the presentation if there's anyone in the public that has a comment. Well, that's advice.
Correct.
Okay, I'm looking the best way to show this in a PDF. Give me one second. Yeah, I'm putting it on the desktop so I can just open it in PDF. Oh, you have it in PDF already? You're a hater, me. Never mind. Thank you. Yep. Okay.
And then go to View. Well, if you go to View, top left, and it should do Full Screen, Full Screen mode.
You bet. Thank you. All right. The public hearing is an annual requirement. It's a requirement both for the new budget and for next year, for 2223, as well as the tax rates. So it's actually combining two legal requirements, the truth in taxation, as well as this on the budget for next year. So, beginning with the tax rates for 2022-20, or just for 2022, tax rates are based on a calendar year. These are the tax rates that have been provided to all of our constituent municipalities. Fifty percent of the taxes for Bloomfield Hills schools are levied in the summer, the other 50% in the winter by December 1. So we actually review some of these rates again in September before we finalize the rates, and then share them with the board again. So these are the rates that we have currently, based on the latest taxable values, as well as our enrollment projections. Some unknowns that'll have more clarity in September when we revisit both what is commonly referred to as the hold harmless tax rate, and also that would... That is actually the second one. The primary residence exemption is commonly referred to as hold harmless. And then the commercial personal property might also change. But that first line, non-primary residence exemption, even though that's the technical description these days, that is also previously referred to as non-homestead. The 18 mills is where we are seeking the millage restoration in August, so that we would be allowed to continue to levy that maximum 18 mills next year. And the proposal is for the remaining three years of this millage because it has been rolled back due to the Hedley Amendment. On the primary residence exemption, the second line, the decrease includes a decrease just based on the composition of our enrollment and taxable values, as well as a change that occurred this school year ending, where the tax, the amount of the hold harmless per pupil was decreased because the state changed the composition of funding and has picked up a portion, decreasing the amount that our local homeowners pay. And then all classifications of property on the very last line is our debt service, which is basically our bonded indebtedness that continues to include the high school bond, as well as the bond issues that have gone out related to the $200 million bond program that is currently ongoing. And we have two bond issuances so far that are included with that 2.75 mills, and that millage rate is actually the maximum for debt service that we said we would include. And then I am seeing on there, I did not include the sinking fund, so I apologize for that. The sinking fund is point, point-six something. It's now under point-seven oh because that is subject to the Hedley rollback. So that actually has, has rolled back a bit as well.
So the 2.75 is just the debt service?
That is just the debt service.
Okay.
Yeah. I was looking up there. It's like, where is my other number? So the general fund is where we'll start. The general fund accounts for the district's core operations, general education, special education, excluding... Those are just for non-center programs. Our center programs are offered county-wide and in a separate fund, and then preschool through 12th grade and beyond, including up to 26 years old for special education students. So for this particular fund, the beginning fund balance is projected off of this year's final budget, and the beginning fund balance as of July 1st, in just about a week or so, is projected to be about $19.6 million. We are in the process of getting ready for our year-end financial audit, which will finalize that number come fall. Based on the total revenues and total expenditures projected for next year, we are looking at a loss of just over $400,000 with a projected ending fund balance a year from now of about $19.2 million. And that percent is 18.6% since that fund balance percentage becomes important with board policy. Funding sources primarily about over two-thirds is related to the foundation allowance, so that a foundation allowance per pupil is part of the state budget process that begins in January and is still ongoing. The state's year-end is September, so there are years that we, just school districts, have waited until September or sometimes early October to know what those numbers are. But it's my understanding, and I know all school districts are pushing to know those numbers as soon as possible. It's been very quiet in Lansing, but I will say on a positive note, and it's noted here, that the revenue estimates that the state has for the next three fiscal years, the state's fiscal years, are extremely positive, and it's unprecedented, has been a word used that we've used before. So we're optimistic on what we will see once, once that comes out, and hopefully it does in the next week or so. It was supposed to by now. The foundation allowance is comprised of state and local sources, and I'll show you that a little bit easier on a pie chart that I include. And then the fourth bullet is important because this year, the school year that is ending, the funding gap for Proposal A and the current funding structure was closed. And basically what that means is oftentimes Bloomfield, as a higher-funded district, received half the increase of lower-funded districts. And so this year, we received a total of $171 increase this past year. And that was, in theory, about half as much as lower-funded districts. So now, going forward, once we hear those numbers from the state, whatever that foundation allowance increase is, it should be the same for everyone, including Bloomfield Hills. The pie chart here just depicts all of the various funding sources, with the largest being the state, 51%. We have to keep in mind, too, with the pandemic funding, a lot of the matching of revenues and expenditures has gone out the window for a few years. Once we get through this next year, I'm looking at us being a little bit more normal with the matching of revenue and expenditures, and also a little bit more normal in the percent compositions, because federal funding has gone up, some state funding sources have gone up. And actually, it's this pie chart I referenced a bit ago when I talk about the foundation allowance being about two-thirds of our total revenue in yellow, which is comprised of a state portion and a local portion. The local portion would represent that hold harmless millage, as well as that 18 mills that we talked about. Key assumptions for next year's budget includes a decrease of 67 for enrollment, and that's not headcount, it's actually full-time equivalents. So the district is paid on full-time equivalents. And 67 decreases what we have, which would be a membership, it's called blended membership, but enrollment, of 5,271 full-time equivalent students. So the enrollment is something that has been tracked for the last few months, especially since kindergarten open house, and it's, it's updated more than once a day, from what I'm seeing. I know a few of us, including Superintendent Watson, have this spreadsheet up, and we just watch it be updated by our enrollment team. So we're watching that very closely, and oftentimes there are a lot of last-minute ads that come through, and then once schools start, we discover there are some exits perhaps that we didn't know about, students that have moved, et cetera. So a decrease is included for this upcoming year. A large part of that is a very large graduating class compared to what we've seen for kindergarten enrollments. And then the enrollment projection or the report we had a few months ago in March also continued to look at birth rates. And so in the statewide, not just Bloomfield, birth rates have declined. So our incoming kindergarten class is nowhere as large as some of our largest outgoing senior classes. The foundation allowance that we're looking at aligns to the governor's budget, $435. Originally, I had 400 in there, but more confidence, there's more, much more confidence among myself and my peers, as well as what we're hearing from Lansing, just based on those revenue estimates and what that'll come in at. So that is the number. So when you see the headline, maybe in the next week, could be two weeks, if it's more or less than 435, we'll have a gauge on that one assumption in the budget, and we'll see how the rest comes in. There are other categorical pieces that could come in.
So just a quick question. The 435, that equates to the 175 that you had just mentioned, which was our foundation per pupil increase this past year. Is that right, Tina?
The 435 does equate to the 171
Yeah.
that we had this past year. Yes.
So significant increase there.
Significant, yes. And that, I think, is where, you know, many of us that like to be very conservative, which, that is my preference, it's, it really, it really is true. Every meeting that we've been at since the May revenue consensus revenue estimating conference where these wonderful numbers were increased beyond when they met in January, we were wondering if they're true, and yes, that's, that is what we're seeing for many different reasons that you can find easily on the state website, and I think I've included in some updates as well. On the spending side, we're pretty flat, with contractual commitments offset by what we call budget balancing actions, which also includes a mindset going into next year. We know that we had a lot of one-time pandemic funding, and the majority of that is def, was definitely spent on non-recurring cost. Easiest example is, is PPE for, because of the pandemic. And then we also know that we increased staffing levels for student learning and distancing for safety reasons. And so we're, we're prepared, and there's already the plan going into next year and actual savings that's making me feel really good about the total that we're going to, I call it normalizing, into our new normal next year and beyond. On the expenditure side, breaking it down in a pie chart here by type, salaries and benefits, is really to show that of the total compensation cost for all of our staff, that is the largest cost as we would expect, and that totals over $86 million. And when we break that down further, 50 million of that is salaries. A large part of the benefits is the pension cost, and the unfunded pension cost that the state actually funds, which is about $9.3 million this past year. So that's a significant amount that has increased year over year and is reflected in total revenues and total expenditures. Next year's amount will be finalized as we get the state aid payments. So right now, the, this year's amount is used as an estimate for next year. Aside from that, purchased services is about $7.7 million. That also includes our contracted staff, whether it's the substitutes or custodial, all of those particular areas. And then outgoing tuition is sometimes a question, so there's a little bit more detail provided on this slide where the outgoing tuition is including our students that are residents of Bloomfield Hills going to the IA Okma campus, as well as our students attending the center programs, Wing Lake or DHH. And then we also have our students that are attending other special education programs at other districts that have the center programs. This is just a reminder, I like to include it, especially for any public that may go and look at the slides that are available on the website. They will be as of tomorrow, I believe. And it is important because, as a board, the policy here is to look at a long-term forecast. You're being asked to approve next year's budget, only one year, but looking at a five-year forecast to gauge your approval and your review, which that five-year forecast, we've been doing for a lot of years, and there are districts, I was surprised that I spoke to, that only do one year, and now they're doing three because of this funding cliff. That the pandemic spending and where they're spending, and whether it's a recurring cost or not, has really forced more districts to take a longer view to see where they're headed. Now, in that five-year forecast, I always like to say the last couple of years are, have the least clarity. the last couple of years have the least clarity. And focusing on the next one to two have the most clarity, especially with the state revenue forecast only going out three years. So with that, this is the forecast. As of, I have to cut it off at a certain date and make sure we get everything in the board package. And as of June 14th, the forecast, the very first column is last year's audited numbers. And then the current is the year that we're closing in on within a week here. And then next year is the just over $400,000 loss. And then if we look at some losses in the next couple of years, we look to turn that around in the last year. There are a lot of details behind it. The state revenue itself, the foundation allowance, is still conservative in some of those years. But really just breaking out where we think total revenue will go up and total spending, including some assumptions on the pension piece of it, land us over 15% in all of the years, and actually improving in that last year.
Question?
Yes.
For 2022-23, the final numbers, do they include that 435 foundation increase?
Yes.
Okay.
And a decrease in enrollment of 67 full-time equivalents, yes. Yep. Yes.
67 decrease enrollment, what is that based off of? Like, when do all families have to declare that they're not coming back?
I defer to, I don't think we have a deadline.
So we'll know the final enrollment when we get to count day in October. At that point, we'll verify and send it into the state for funding. And so the number came from the plant Moran Cressa data that was shared with the board earlier. So...
So could that be low? If a lot of, you know, I mean, we're basing it. So we don't know, we don't have a sense. I know you sent a survey out of how many families intend on not returning at this point. We don't have a definite sense or a good ballpark sense.
The 67s are our best estimate to go with right now. It could be more, it could be less. And so one of the things we've been doing is preparing in case there is more, just in case, right? If there's more, then that's additional income. But what happens if it's five less or seven less? So if you were to transfer to a different school district or move out of state or what have you, at some point, that new district will request a CA 60, the official record, so to speak. And that would be sent to the new school. At that point, we would send them a disenrollment form and ask them to disenroll.
So there's no formal process until they register in the fall? To know for a fact that people are leaving?
Right, and some people let you know right away, you know, hey, I'm moving, we're going back to Germany, we've enjoyed our four years in the United States, and we're going back, and I work for this company, and we won't be returning. Other people, just when they decide to make that decision, they do. We see, on the other end, the same with kindergarten. It'd be nice if we knew every single kindergarten student that was going to enroll. We'll get enrollments up to the first day of school, and then typically the first two weeks of school, you have more people that trickle in. They're like, oh yeah, it's time for Pat to go to school, we need to register, or the school's already started.
This is the same way that all school districts in the state of Michigan budget. You have a budget that's due to Lansing by June 30th, and you really won't know your student count until count day in October. The only thing, no, count day is 90%. The 10% is from
Fall, February.
From February of 2022.
Yes.
So that's locked in. So the 10% is locked in, the 90% is up in the air until we get to four months.
That is locked in. And actually, even after count day, there are windows where the student, when students can still show up and be counted. And then there's a whole audit process that goes on by the ISD, by Oakland Schools. And actually, the winter count audited report just came across my desk. And the numbers for general education and special education were up just slightly from the fall. So in the same school year. But I was happy to see that because 10% of that counts for next year's funding.
And also, the schools prefer having a budget already approved by Memorial Day. Well, here we are, the third week of June, and we still don't have a budget coming from the state.
Yes, that's true. So moving from the general fund to the special revenue funds. Special revenue funds are the ones listed at the bottom. So the center programs, which we have for the county, both our Wing Lake and DHH, the International Academy, for which we are the fiscal agent for the Okma campus, our Recreation Community Services Fund, Food Services, Hills Activities, which are commonly called the Hills Fund, student groups, et cetera, and co-curricular endowment. So all told, the total is looking just basically break even. A decrease of about 131,000, landing at an estimated fund balance of $8.3 million next year. So now that was for next year. That really is what is required, the tax rates and the next year's budget. So now looking at the final budget revisions for this year, they haven't changed over the time that we've had discussions between board members and administration. But just to review it here, the final budget projections, I am showing all of the different versions throughout the year, where we started out originally, which was $2.6 million of spending over revenue. And then the final budget is about 2.9. So the difference in the net hasn't changed. And when you look at the revenue trend up and the expenditure trend up, there was a lot of different grant revenue that wasn't yet approved. We didn't receive approval, or that came about. So as that happened, the revenues went up. And then there's a spending that relates to that particular revenue. That's the bulk of it.
Tina, is there a typo on that title? Should that be 21, 22?
Yes, it should, thank you. See, now this one, I knew I wasn't going to change, and I should have gone back through it. I'll do that before I put it on the website. On the special revenue funds for this year, for 21-22, the fund balance starts out at about $7.9 million. And then we have a surplus of over 500, ending the fund balance of 8.5 in total for all of the same funds. History and trends, there are just a couple of charts I have here. And that's really looking at the revenue and expenditure trend. And while it looks to have a pretty good upward projection in total, year over year, one way or another, there's a little chart here that I like to keep up, which is the unfunded pension revenue that comes in. That's exactly equal to the expenditure because we have to send the money right back. And so when we look at that year over year, that trend line, and I didn't get a chance to do a new graph, but I'm looking at adding a shadow line in here to show what that trend would be without those amounts. Because it's difficult to compare year over year. It's not that we've spent that much more without that offsetting revenue. This one here, the foundation allowance, we had, I am probably going to retire this slide, but it still has meaning because since Proposal A, this is basically just showing how the increase for Bloomfield Hills here in the purple, year over year cumulatively, compared to the GDP price deflator, we really have not received funding to keep up with inflation. And this is just something we've shown all the time. We had all the different fund balance or fund allowance, foundation allowance, levels in here. And then little by little, they have met, and now the gap's closed. So just showing this one last time.
The difference is there, that's really, because our funding increases from the state have not kept up with inflation?
Yes.
That's driving our budget balancing actions.
Mm-hmm. It does. I always say that there's a three-legged stool for our budget. We're striving always towards balance, and that is our enrollment, the foundation allowance per pupil, and then also budget balancing actions or budget mindset. So those three things. And depending on where the funding and enrollment are, really drives the degree of aggressiveness we need to take with budget balancing actions. And then lastly, a little bit blurry on screen, but the Bloomfield website has a finance pages section, and there's a lot of information on there. Right from the homepage, there's this transparency icon with a lot of different data. They have indicator scores. We haven't been greater than a two and came out of that because we had some budget challenges back in 2015-16. And that degree of budget balancing action brought us right back to where we wanted to be. And now that we're facing the pandemic funding cliff, we're working right back towards that too, to make sure there's long-term financial sustainability. Any questions? Comments?
Any public comment?
No public comment, okay. So two things, Ms. Kostick. Number one, I've got some comments from the public out and around saying that they've seen things in the press related to other districts and financial issues that they are experiencing. I'm not seeing anything in our numbers that are indicating that we have any financial concerns of great note. Obviously, there are some deficits here, but they're relatively minor and also can be contained with any budget balancing actions. And also, they're within our policies. Correct? Okay. Also, at the study session a few weeks ago, I made comment that there was a lot of discussion between the board and the administration about three or four or five weeks ago, related to budget issues and questions going back and forth. I'm hoping my fellow board members can work with the administration over the next few months, as we start setting up the calendar for next year, to think about the questions that we brought up for this budget year and think about what we can do throughout the 2022-23 fiscal year so that we, the board and the community, are more informed about our financial situation as we go through, such that when we get to May and June of 2023, the board is very comfortable with the numbers that are presented. And therefore, the kind of the fury of questions that were going back and forth will not be occurring in a year from now. So that just means that we have to plan a little bit over the next few months to think through how we can be, you know, increase our transparency and communication from the administration to us and the community so that those issues get resolved all the way through the year instead of kind of accumulating all at the end.
So I think what you're saying, Howard, very politely. I would like to tell the community that we put Tina and her team through the wringer on this because there was frankly, a lot of fear and loathing from us about years of
Not loathing, but
It's a colloquialism, yes. We, there was concern because of COVID and looking at one year of deficit, which our community is very lucky that we're not used to experiencing. And then looking at several years down the road of deficits and being very concerned about that. So I just wanted to share how hard you and your team worked on addressing all of our concerns, all of the figures, and getting us to the best-case scenario of sustainability possible. So thank you very much.
And I appreciate that. And I must say, it's not just myself or the finance team. It really is a broad administrative team and led by Superintendent Watson to make sure that we have the degree of aggressiveness needed for budget balancing actions and a mindset going into next year, what I'm calling, you know, our new normal.
Thank you, Tina.
Thanks.
We'll call up Mr. Wills for number 12. Special Report Quarterly Bond Update.
Thank you, sir, and good evening, everybody. Today is our quarterly update for the board. And real short and brief, it's going to be on schedule and on budget. That's kind of the theme of our update today. So the presentation has three parts to it. One is the financial and schedule for, we'll call it Series One, Phase One programs. Take a look at the four projects that are currently in construction. And also some of the design steps that we'll be looking forward through over the summer into the fall, and ultimately some board activities in terms of reviewing of schematic design development estimates, construction design estimates, and ultimately the bids here in the fall of 2022. So again, for those out there watching, the district was able to pass a 200 million, $155,000 bond program. There's actually three series. First series was 94 million, 45,000, which was sold shortly after the bond was passed in 2020. Through actually some forward thinking from the administration and the board, actually an approval of issuance of Series 2A of about $20 million. We'll tell you why that was important to accelerate some of the design and construction work that's taking place. And the last series, the 86 million remaining would be anticipated in the spring of 2023, which really gives the district an ability to accelerate some of those projects that are anticipated in 26, 27 timeframe sooner, which we'll also talk about. So committed to date, the 114 million
Excuse me, Mr. Wills, are you sure, is this the most, the latest version? Because this presentation went through about three or four revs over the last few days. Are you sure you've got the right one up?
No, the one edit is not in yet.
Okay. So, yeah, I think that final bullet, in the final, the latest revision says the amount of funds issued for Series One and Series 2A equals $114 million, not committed.
That is correct. And great point for your view, and I appreciate the eyes and ears before. And again, I think to Tina's point, it'll be the most recent on the board docket for the public once it gets going live. From a compliance standpoint, with the awards of the interiors for the Conan Way East and West Middle Schools, that'll actually push you over the 85% requirement for expenditures in the first three years. So you're actually about a year ahead of schedule, which is just phenomenal in terms of putting bond dollars to work and putting more escalation behind us, if you will. So what does Series One and Series 2A cover? Again, if you've driven by Lassiter's site or the BHMS site, which would be the North Hills and South Hills, you'll see a lot of construction taking place. Right now, Barton Mall Builders is doing about $5 million a month of construction in place. So we are really accelerating the amount of work that's taking place. Now that school's out at both Conan Way, you're going to see some of the site infrastructure and some of the additional works with the foundations for the classroom additions, the gymnasium, the cafeteria taking place, a relocation of playgrounds, things that are in temporary drives for the fall so we can maintain education once we get the kids back here in September. We're also continuing with piloting of technology. So Mr. Shulkin and his team have done a great job kind of really getting into the elementary, middle schools, what this could look like once the fall of '23 comes into play. And same thing with the furniture, which I appreciate the board approving and recommending some of the work for the piling from the six various manufacturers. Just to give the public an idea, there's about $20 million of technology, including the bond. About another $10 million of furniture that'll be implemented over the next four to five years for the program. So let's fast forward to some of the budgetaries. So in the first column, you'll see the kind of the contract budget. Again, post-bond, it adds up to the $200 million, 155,000 in the bottom. You'll see just the district-wide, which includes everything from professional fees, CM fees, costs, FF and E, closing costs, et cetera, about $82 million. Series One construction only is about $90 million. But when you really start taking a look at what those requirements would be, that's why it was important that the board looked at that extra $20 million because we want to be able to start those interior renovations at the four elementary schools here in the spring and summer going forward. So right now, committed in the second quarter, there's about $31.45 million of district-wide. The board's actually reviewed and approved about $79 million of cost of construction. So that's the amount of work that you're seeing here. There'd be another $10 million coming to the board in the fall, winter. That's the additional interiors, which puts you about $125 million of committed costs to date. In terms of spent to date, again, Tina and her group have done a great job keeping the process of payments going. Because the more that the contractors get paid quicker, the more they tend to show up and do great work. So again, kudos to Tina and her team for those efforts.
Tina, again, I think this slide had some changes made to it.
I think this is the original, original, original.
Thank you.
Watch this, the magic of VPN here.
Yeah, you can check, this is the right one.
All right.
All right.
Let me do this. It's there. We have to go to Novus. I hope she hits it. Novus, Novus. It's the primary. It's the second. You can do it. It's right in there. This is, this is, we made our mistake.
Right.
I just don't know how she gets to Novus. Vicki. It's in August 2nd. Because then it's just going to be confusing.
So, the one that's wrong.
They've been changing over the last 24 hours. I think we're on red four at this point.
The one in the invite kind of launch is that. That's the one I have.
The one that I'm using is that's going on the agenda.
The agenda.
Yes.
That's what it said. This is the one.
Yes.
That's correct.
But now, yeah, but I'm just looking at the, when you go a few pages up. I don't think these numbers box right now. If you, if you can blow that up a little.
I think I have to download it.
Read it. Anyway, it's 31 plus 79 does not equal 94. So, I think even, even the latest one has some math issues that have to do with that.
View, full screen.
I'll be back.
All right. Technical difficulties here.
And Tina, Tina, don't go yet. I think when we, even this, which is the latest version, you're right, if you look at the committed column, 31 plus 79 does not, and 14 does not equal 94.
It's the 79 plus 14.
Oh, it's 79 plus 14?
Right.
Okay.
Same. It's those last-
So, it's just, it's just the things in yellow.
Those last three rows.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
I apologize. So, we'll get back. Okay. So, again, just kind of an overall budget. Again, doing great work at the existing schools. We come into contingencies. So, again, that was one of the questions the board had previously. Again, if you look at construction contingency and escalation, which we'll talk about here shortly as, as part of an upcoming board action item, we will use about $2.659 million of that. So, when you look at roughly $50, $60, $70 million of construction, we're actually pacing very, very well. I know the board asked in the spring, when can we really start to consider? I think once we get out of the ground with Conan Way, that really gives an idea. So, we've actually put the next slide in graph format. So, if you take a look at a three-year construction cycle, the $18.2 million would be if you spent all $13 million or 13%, which would be 10% of, of costs, contingency plus escalation. We anticipate you'll spend about 7.5%. Again, that's kind of the industry standard. Right now, we're at about 2.65%, which again is significantly below. So, I think that really tends a lot, I think, back to Superintendent Watson, Ms. Kostick, Mr. McDermott. There are so many user groups with all the users, the principals. So, there's been minimal owner requested changers. A lot of changers here are going to be field conditions, requests from the township, et cetera. So, really, at the end of the day, we feel extremely good about this slide here. And again, our job is on a monthly basis to update this with the administrative team, give you quarterly updates. So, our recommendation would be is, once we get out of the ground this summer, we'd want to come back to the board and say, here's where we feel comfortable reducing that 10%, let's say down to seven and a half percent. I'm kind of aligned with your, with your expenditure rates going forward.
So, what I think I'm hearing you say is by the next, the third quarter update, which will be September-ish, we could maybe have you extrapolate, no, go back. So, on this graph, extrapolate that third line, the bottom line outward in terms of what that might look like. And then if you go back one slide, that graph only is the top line there.
Correct.
So, we have the furniture fixtures, the technology, and owner contingency. And obviously, with inflation on the technology and furniture fixtures, that might be something we might want to take into consideration. So, by the, by three months from now, the team might be able to look at that and give us some sort of ideas to where things are looking?
Yeah, I think we talked about this in the February board session. Again, it was more of, let's get Conan Way foundations. It's about 46,000 square feet of additions between the two sites. A lot of site work with utilities. I want to get that underneath our belt here by September. So, I think back to that comment of the third quarter report, be able to get a much better snapshot of this slide right here and really help you understand like what does that phase two look like from design options, which we'll talk about here shortly. Again, phenomenal job from French Associates, really taking time with the drawings with the users, getting great bid coverage from Barton Mall Builders. You hear some other districts, they got one bidder, no electrical bidders, things that nature. We've been able to get at least three to four bidders in every category for the bids we've gotten to date.
And then another thing, if you go back one slide, so that owner's contingency, that's purely the district's discretion. That's not something construction-wise, that's for additional asks if, if we had any.
Yeah, again, it's, you think of it as like program allocation or contingency. When we first started, that was zero. So, it's been great to build it over time. Any contingency actually does have to be approved by the district by both Tina Kostick and Jake McDermott. So, there's a, that changer of process that we reviewed, I think with-
And hopefully, the board also gets some discussion.
Yeah, and actually, there's a couple of action items this evening. We'll talk about some changers.
And then also, at the last study session, we talked about different locations for the transportation and physical plant services center. If we ended up putting it on district property as opposed to buying new property, that might impact the owner's contingency and give it a number of million dollars additional than- So, there's, you know, these things are moving around and possibly, you know, in a positive direction. So, when you said that we're on budget, quite frankly, based upon some of these two slides here, we're really under budget.
We are.
So far.
Yeah, I was going to say, when we get to that board recommendation for the roofing, we'll just point out one quick thing about just cost escalation materials, even the last six months. But right now, we're feeling very good about where you're at with contingency usage. Again, North and South, if you've driven by, we're putting the roofing materials, you know, the roof structures on, they're already on site. We procured 100% of the material, so we're not waiting for items to show up late or at all. So, again, just a great job of the board for making timely decisions. And again, the Superintendent Watson and his team to push as much design in 2020 and '21 to be where we're at today.
And the reason I bring this up is that as we start talking about capital budgeting and our sinking fund discussions, these kind of numbers can sort of get incorporated into that discussion.
Hundred percent. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
So, as we reviewed at the workshop, I'm not going to go through these specifically. But again, this is just the most recent shot of North Hills Middle School. Again, the black you see is actually the waterproofing, which is going to be covered with the bricks, the metal panels, and things that nature you saw in the rendering. So, it's kind of neat to see how rendering really comes to fruition from a construction standpoint. So, about a $55.2 million program. The pool has actually been poured. We actually have a lifetime video feed of that.
You didn't invite us?
I'm sorry?
No.
Oh, for the pour? All right, for the water. We'll do the water test shortly.
You didn't invite us to the pool pouring party.
There was a couple trucks of concrete lined up, and they poured in all single slab. It was pretty impressive, but we'll send you the link that shows it in time, time feed. But that project was actually accelerated by six months, so that will be done by the fall of '23.
And, and just kind of going back to the high school, we had many concerns that popped up when we actually had to excavate the pool. So, it's wonderful that those kind of issues that we had on the high school site didn't pop up on LaSueur's site.
Yeah, again, I commend French Associates, the Barad and Bill Robertson, who've probably done about 50 pools with them over the last 20-plus years and just his knowledge of the pool systems themselves and similar conditions to make sure that technology was there, to make sure that the process was done correctly, so you have a longevity issue with the pool. Switching to South Hills, about $38.9 million. You can sign, start to see the cafeteria kind of take place. And Superintendent Watson had a chance to tour West Bloomfields, which this was modeled after, and it's just so impressive. So, the good thing, this is actually a bit larger than I believe was at West Bloomfield. Obviously, the technology, the furniture are really going to make this space a great space, not just for auditoriums and plays, but just for flexible, flexible space for Mr. English and his team there at the South Hills Middle School.
When you talk about the West, West Bloomfield, that's the brand-new high, or the new middle school that's just been-
Correct.
Is going to have a ribbon cutting in the next month or two, I think.
That is correct. So, Conan, again, this is just the phasing, which is on the district's website. So, thanks to Karen Huey and her team, just to keep the public informed. We had a chance to meet with all the principals, teachers, Superintendent Watson, myself, Rob Direka, talk about the transitioning, what to expect for the fall of '23, see in purple kind of the contractors' aspects and driveways, et cetera. The goal is obviously safety. I mean, we're going to be able to build this facility while school's in operation, minimizing impact to education throughout the fall of next year and get this done for the fall of '23. What you see in green there, those are the additions, the five classrooms plus the gymnasium in the back. And then same thing at Wayal Menture, a little bit tighter site. You can see the temporary parking that's kind of in the upper left. That's for going to be parents and visitors. As a parent of three-way kids, that's going to be definitely needed. The green contractor parking seat upright, obviously separation of, of the workers and the students. And then again, just, we've met with the fire marshal in terms of safe paths of egress while construction's going on. So, again, great job to the team there for that going forward. So, where are we at now in design? So, again, this summer, we've actually had a chance to walk through. Actually, I think Superintendent Watson joined the team today over at East Hills, talking about the, and Michelle, thank you. Just again, safety, security is a major aspect of it. How do you get parents and students and visitors to the building safely? There's a lot of great other options relative to where the kindergarten potentially is going to be located, saving some additional potential dollars there and just being able to renovate that space. So, again, our job would be here in the late summer, fall to give the board an update where we're at with the design development estimates, go off for bids, come back in that timeframe for that late December, early January award, just to keep track and keep ahead of the pace going forward. So, we're currently on site with design and appreciate everyone's input. So, Project Two, again, is just wrapping up really the construction of Eastover at East Hills site. We started putting those in our presentations for those nomenclatures, if you will, and same thing with Lone Pine at West Hills. We've actually kicked off the Bloomfield Hills High School athletics. So, again, looking at turf fields for the baseball and softball fields, some of the design programming validation for the wellness centers. And again, how does technology integration also go forward for that? Because we're in a great spot financially, again, with the second, the third series of Series Two B, we want to meet with French Associates and their design team to see if we can accelerate just the remaining parts of the bond program itself. And instead of having bid pack nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, let's just have bid pack 10, 11, 12 and just bang this out. So, again, we'll give you more updates as we go through that process, but there's a lot of moving parts. We've got the right team in place and appreciate the leadership from the board for really, you know, challenging us and our, and the design team to try to accelerate it because at the end of the day, cost escalation's not going away. So, the faster the district get to the table with bids and get stuff in the ground, the more it's going to be beneficial long-term for the district.
Especially considering the inflation rate that we're currently seeing nationwide and also the supply issues coming from overseas.
Correct, 100%. So, that, that wraps up our quarterly report. Again, I really look forward to come back here in the September, October timeframe with a little bit clearer picture on the contingency of use, the ground ups, scope of work, and just keep the conversation going. So, at this time, I'll turn back over to President of the Board for any questions.
You want to go around? Seba?
So, question for both Paul and Tina. Given rates are going up, borrowing rates, is there an opportunity to pull ahead the balance of the funding? Is there any advantage to pulling ahead issue of Series Two B bonds?
Here comes Tina.
It's actually a great question. You know, some of it is, you have to spend 15% in the first year. So, that would be our challenge, and I'll turn over to Ms. Kostick who talked about the pros and cons of this.
Yeah, and Paul actually knows the same, same thing. So, not only are there requirements in the, the timing for making sure that we spend, but remember, we accelerated $20 million of Series Two already. I'm glad we did that, and I'm glad we refunded the high school bonds when we did as well. So, for the final, we also have to consider making sure that any projects that we can accelerate to spend it fast enough, basically within treasury requirements. So, even with the, with inflation, the escalation, the, you know, worker, do we have enough workers to accelerate the construction to meet all the requirements? So, I would say that that's, that's on the radar because we've talked about accelerating work wherever possible and shortening the timeframe. And your point is another reason why we need to make sure we do that as soon as we think feasible.
If I may, for the next quarterly update, maybe we could reach out to Carrie Blanchett at PFM and see kind of what the trends were from this quarter to next quarter, what's anticipated, what they actually had projected for that Two B. And then again, kind of have that conversation in September, say, where's that opportunity? Is it a January sale, April sale?
Because we said basically the first half of '23, and so perhaps we'll accelerate that by a little bit as long as we make sure that the construction timeline and the availability of starting the projects and getting them done is, is feasible.
The good part about a lot of secondary work is a lot of interior work. So, it's flooring, it's ceilings, it's light fixtures. So, it's not like you're replacing switchgear that's 52 weeks out right now for some districts or large rooftop units, which may be 40 weeks out. So, again, that's where I think it's important to look at the scope holistically and go there.
The only thing in terms of doing interior stuff is, you know, the risk would be asbestos.
District's actually done a really good job over the years, you know, commending Mr. Gobin, obviously, Mr. McDermott and his experience with that. We've actually run into minimal through North Hills, South Hills. Nova's been a great environmental partner, identifying things early, getting in. I know Randy English, working with him, we actually took out some ceilings and stuff during, when school was out for spring break, but that allowed the contractors really start the day after school to really accelerate the construction. So, again, appreciate the principal's flexibility, understanding there's going to be some short-term pain, but obviously get the work done quicker and get out and get out of the way. But great question on the PFM interest rates.
What would be the savings on the professional fees, I mean, if we accelerated in, based on your timeline?
Yeah, so we'd have to go back to see, so French Associates is kind of a fee fixed as you award the rewards. We'd have to go back to the Barton Mallow and as well as other professionals to kind of see the impact of that. We've probably worked through the administration team and get back to that question and the answer. I do know, for instance, when we worked with Lebonia Schools, we were actually able to do $195 million in five years. We saved about 8% of soft costs just on $195 million. So, it's a pretty significant number. So, again, that's something we could probably really hone in on and try to get some actual numbers or ranges for that conversation. But that's a great point, Trustee.
And so, as Mr. Wills mentioned, that's why a lot of the design work is going on right now so that as soon as we're able to move on all these additional projects, we can move immediately as opposed to waiting to do the design work within a different timeframe. So, our, our goal is, we can, to get done a year early. You know, a lot of the community members I talked to, there's certain amenities within the bond that are looking forward to, and the sooner the better for them as far as getting it done.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. Thank you for adding the brackets with Eastover at East Hills. I did notice that throughout the presentation, so it was very helpful for me.
Helps us too. We were like talking during the OAC meeting, it's like, all right, so we're at East Hills? No, it's Eastover. We got it, so.
Thank you. I did notice that. Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Positive.
That's appreciated because it is hard to remember. And then you, you know, if you're, if you're concerned about one of the schools and you're like, I don't see my school there, you know? So, I agree. Any other questions? All right. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Thanks, Tina, for throwing over the question. And thanks for the questions.
All right, we'll move on to 13A, the High School Mikey Report. Welcome, Mr. Strutter and Ms. McDonald.
There we go.
Love the color.
All right, excellent.
And the tattoos.
Yep, right, yeah. I don't-
Well, I couldn't see her. I couldn't see her.
She's sitting right across from me the entire time, too. That's okay. Look again.
I don't, I don't get to do this very often, so I'm a little excited, you know?
No, this is good enough for me. We need to close the presentation.
Very good. Good evening, Board of Education Members, Superintendent Watson, Central Office Administrators and Staff, and most importantly, the community members of Bloomfield Hills. My name is Lawrence Strutter, and as the Principal of Bloomfield Hills High School, it is my honor to share with you the state of Bloomfield Hills High School and the following Michigan Continuous Improvement Plan. Our mission at Bloomfield Hills High School is to empower students to become lifelong learners and equip them with the skills needed for success in a global society. This mission is supported by our, by our four cornerstones, relationships, authentic learning, innovation, responsibility, and ownership. Over the entire school, our entire school community is dedicated to this mission and continues to work to create an environment that is safe, secure, and that nurtures our students during this most critical time in their lives. We work intentionally to accomplish this mission with every procedure we develop, with every conversation among colleagues, and every interaction with our students and parents. Tonight, I will share with you our recent past in the form of data points from the 2021 school year, our present-day data from the 2122 school year, and the foreseeable future plan for 202223 school year. Tonight, I will share with you our recent past in the form of data points from the 2021 school year, our present-day data from the 2122 school year, and the foreseeable future plan for 202223 school year. Let's begin with data points. Uh-oh. Yeah, there you go. Thanks. Let's begin with data points from the 2021 school year. The context is important. The context for the 2021 school year included teachers' learning, I emphasize teachers' learning, to teach remotely while also teaching students in person concurrently. Teachers adapted to this new learning manage, a new learning management system called Canvas to support instruction, ultimately, learning during the period, during this period of time. It was incredibly difficult and time-consuming to write new lesson plans for this difficult content in a way that supports learning remotely and also in person. Once the lessons were written, the challenge of teaching without visual cues of understanding was muted behind masks or computer screens. Teachers were also required to evaluate authentic learning of our students with fidelity while also showing compassion for the trauma that the pandemic has caused everyone, had caused everyone. From a student perspective, students took classes for the first time and had varying levels of support from family members and had to navigate through isolating learning modes such as virtual, hybrid, in-person. Technology challenges, poor internet connections, screen time fatigue, and navigating Canvas for the first time. Mental health challenges, new stresses, limiting the ways that our students could relax, and social development loss, opportunities to develop maturity and understanding of right and wrong and the general social communication skills. As I present the following data to you, you will find that despite the challenges faced, that faced our students and staff, our students performed beyond anyone's reasonable expectations. In order to show comparative data for the 2021 school year, we must reach back to the 201819 school year because state testing was canceled in the school year of 1920, when COVID-19 was first upon us. The students of Bloomfield Hills High School, also known as the graduating class of 2022, outperformed the state average in all state testing areas. SAT ELA, SAT Math, MYSTEP Science, MSTEP Social Studies. As we continually chase the goal of preparing all of our students to be proficient or above in all state assessments, Bloomfield Hills High School, when compared to the 201819 school year, showed improvement in the numbers of students proficient or above in SAT ELA by 3.4 increase and MSTEP Social Studies, 8.3 increase. There was a 1.5 downward change in SAT Math. The MSTEP Science is a new assessment, and we currently do not have any prior year data to compare to. If you take a closer look at our SAT data from 2021 and compare it to the average of three school years, 201617, 201718, and 201819, then what we see on the SAT ELA, the numbers of students proficient or above increased from 81% to 82%, a simple change of one percentage point. The SAT ELA, also referred to as the SAT Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, shows an increase in the number of students proficient or above in the following subgroups. Black, 8.7%, economically disadvantaged, 5.4%, and students with disabilities, 8%. The SAT ELA shows a decrease in subgroups, Asian, 7.7%, and white, 0.6%. When we compare the SAT Math average of 201617, 201718, 201819 school years, the math SAT number of students proficient or above decreased from 62% to 59.4%, a 2.6% change. The SAT Math shows an increase in the number of students proficient or above in the following subgroups. Black, 14%, economically disadvantaged, 10.1%, the students with, students with disabilities, 8.3%. SAT Math shows a decrease in the subgroup of Asians and white, 5.1%. Now I will give you the context for the 2122 school year, which is the year we're currently in. It includes students and teachers returning to school with concerns of COVID-19 continuing to impact the health of people everywhere. Social distancing was limited from previous standards, and the primary mitigation strategy was wearing masks to protect yourself and others. Teachers continued to build new lessons with their new understanding of how to use Canvas effectively, but struggled to read the faces of their students and gauge their understanding behind the mask. Assessing learning became a challenge. Our students had grown accustomed to the grace afforded them through the pandemic. Students struggled with the stamina it took for them to engage all day, every day. This led to students exercising poor judgment in some cases due to lack of maturity and understanding of right and wrong. Additionally, students and staff were placed in a position of uncertainty by new principal being named mid-year. In an effort to best serve the students of Bloomfield Hills High School, the teaching staff elected to engage in several teacher-led professional developments. The instructional coaches of Bloomfield Hills High School formed teachers' learning-together cohorts. Topics included culturally responsive teaching, IBDP, student engagement, and comprehensive input. Teachers participated in learning labs designed to observe and learn from the instruction of fellow teachers. This activity included teachers self-assessing their skill sets, classroom observations, reflection of what is, what they observed, and creating a plan to apply their new learning in their own classroom settings. To deepen teachers' understanding of the new learning management system, Canvas, teachers engaged in Technology Integration PD. Teachers practiced using the tools of Canvas, giving formative assessments to their students, providing feedback to students and parents that supported learning and growing. To continue learning how to best support students struggling with transitioning into in-person learning, teachers participated in PDs on social-emotional learning. The three signature practices of SEL were explored, welcoming inclusion activities, engaging strategies, and optimistic closures. To begin serving students with accommodations, teachers participated in a PD on differences between modifications and accommodations, 504 plans versus individualized education plans, or IEPs. To better understand how to support students in learning important skills, teachers were presented the basics of IB-NYP approaches to learning. Teachers learned how to develop our students' thinking skills, social skills, communication skills, self-management skills, and resource skills. To create space for everyone that attends Bloomfield Hills High School, teachers participated in two professional development opportunities presented by the ABL with a focus on no-place-for-hate. The learning focused on identifying, recognizing bias, challenging bias, and disrupting bias. Now, let's take a look at our teachers' grade books. Student grade book data for the 202122 school year looks promising, but we still have some work to do. I personally believe that if a student takes a class, then the student should pass the class. If not, then we must know why not and be able to show how we have done everything possible to support that student and help that student find success. When we take a look at Semester 1, the grade data shows that 97% of the 15,223 grades assigned resulted in students passing the course attempted. 54% of all grades assigned were the letter grade A. 3% or 459 grades were E, which would then require our students to retake those courses. 19.36% of grades assigned were the grade of G for first semester. Many of the G grades assigned occur in courses such as interdisciplinary studies, where pass or fail is the only option. Only 42 students were approved for pass or fail grade options, and 48 different courses show, gives you the grades that were assigned.
Just, just to clarify, the 42 students that were approved for the pass/fail, that is, if the course obviously only has a pass/fail, that's not included in that, right? Those are 42 students that elected or used the pass/fail option that would generally give them a letter grade if they didn't.
Semester 2, grade data shows that 97.5% of the 15,110 grades assigned resulted in the students passing the course attempted. 52% or 7,910 of all grades assigned were A. 2.5% or 373 grades were the letter grade of E, which would require the students to repeat the course. 19.61% of grades assigned were the letter grade G for pass. 55 students were approved for using the pass/fail option and in one or more courses. The optional pass or fail was used in 72 different courses during Semester 2. For our students that did not find success in all of their courses, we are offering several summer school options. Credit recovery via Ingenuity and Michigan Virtual School. Students seeking credit, advancement, and other learning opportunities should coordinate their desires with their counselor to ensure proper credit is earned. Our fast bridge data for the fall, winter, and spring indicates that this year's ninth graders are meeting expected, expected growth in ELA and also in Math. Several of our subgroups, Black, Latinx, English language learners, and students with disabilities will continue to need intentional targeted support if we are to realize our goal of all of our students meeting proficiency on the grade 11 SAT and MSTEP assessments. Our students at Bloomfield Hills High School study English and other world languages to learn how to communicate ideas from one person to another, one communication, one community to another. Our students learn Math and Science to learn how to process their ideas, add context to their ideas, and to form well-reasoned thoughts. Our students study Social Studies to develop an understanding of the past and the context of the present and give them ideas about how to develop, to create positive impacts on the future. Finally, our students study the visual, fine, and performing arts to participate in, in other activities such as athletics to truly appreciate the humanities which separate us from other, the other creatures of the world. We as a school then give our students opportunity to practice what they have learned in the real world of our building. This tool above that you see here is used to cause students to inquire, reflect, and then choose how to positively act in a way that impacts the world around them. Oh, go on, Pat.
Hi, sorry.
Yeah.
One jump.
Our students are asked to identify the problem. Once they identify the problem that they are facing, name the desired outcome so that they know that they have achieved the success that they are looking for, brainstorm solutions with like-minded individuals, create a plan of action, then implement that plan of action. And after they've implemented that plan of action, evaluate that plan of, that, that implementation with, compared to the desired outcomes. And if the plan of action achieved the desired outcomes, there's no more problem. But if there's still problems, then adjust the plan and start the cycle again.
Is that something that the counselors assist the students with? Or is this on an individual class basis with the teachers?
This is something that I'm trying to bring forward to the entire school community. And I'm sharing it with them at different assemblies, sharing it with staff so staff can start to use it with their students. I want them to become thinkers, and I want them to become action-oriented, but I want them to be thoughtful about the actions that they choose. You know, our students are able to see things that are not necessarily right in their eyes, but they need to be thoughtful on how they react, and this tool helps us get there.
This is something that, again, it's, an individual student with an individual teacher.
Could be.
It could be, and it also could be with the counselors, which is more overarching.
Correct.
It's overarching. I want every student in our buildings to go through this process. Whenever they see a process, whenever they have a dilemma.
Now?
Yes. Thank you, Kathy.
No problem.
You're the best. Yes. They keep me straight. They really do. Okay. The fall of this past school year, Bloomfield Hills High School experienced a difficult time returning to in-person school from COVID-19. This spring, six sophomore students chose to do something to positively impact our local building culture. In partnership with administration, the Sophomore Six organized a Diversity Day Assembly for every student of Bloomfield Hills High School with a vision to create more space for everyone at Bloomfield Hills High School. Bravo to the Sophomore Six for organizing such a great diversity assembly.
And I attended that, and it was wonderful.
You did. Thank you, Howard. Yes, it was. Our students are applying their thoughts to the invasion of Ukraine. They are asking questions such as, what is the relationship between Ukraine, Russia, and the United States? What motivated, what motivations possibly caused Russia to invade Ukraine? Why does the United States support Ukraine in a way that it is supporting? How might the war impact the people of Ukraine, the people of the region, and the people of the world? So our kids are starting to become globally minded. Our students are observing what is happening around our nation as well. Another sophomore student that was moved to action by gun violence organized a student pledge to end gun violence. She provided students with information on how to contact their leaders and lawmakers. As you know, the mission of Bloomfield Hills High School is to empower students to become lifelong learners and equip them with the skills needed for success in a global society. Students using their voice to question and to demand better empowers and equips our students with the skills they will need in a global society and then to act, not just tweet or post. To continue to develop our students this summer, teachers will engage in a book study of grading for equity through four, four virtual meetings via Zoom to discuss grading practice topics that include grading accuracy, grading for accuracy, bias-resistant grading, grading that motivates student learning. The future, the future of Bloomfield Hills High School looks bright. Listed here are some of the plans we have for Bloomfield Hills High School for this upcoming school year to help us continue to improve as we, as we are always trying to do. We are looking forward to returning to business as usual, but of course, business as usual has changed. Our recent past has taught us how to engage and teach our students differently. When you know better, then you do better. It's a simple concept. We know better. So now, we at Bloomfield Hills High School will build a community that will allow our students to have more clarity around our expectations, more genuine relationships, more authentic learning experiences, more innovative thinking, and more responsibility and ownership. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you. Principal Stroud, I have a question. So the G option in a class which normally isn't graded G, so things that are not advisory, I, I believe that that was implemented when COVID started. And so do you, do you see it as being a perpetual mechanism? What, what do you envision as the future of the strategy? I was surprised to see an increase of the G option from this past fall to this past spring, because, you know, one would think students were more re-acclimated, but I also remember that in January, we had a terrific number of COVID cases, which may have put some students behind.
Sure. There's, so the option existed prior to COVID.
Okay.
We, we certainly, as we were going through COVID and, and found that more students might need that option and, and benefit from that option as we were in an unprecedented time, we increased the number that we allowed students to opt that class, to opt that grade scale for. So if a student has eight classes, prior to COVID, there was a maximum of two that a student could, uh...
Per term or per school year?
Per semester. Per, per semester.
Okay.
And then during COVID, we, we increased that, and it was, there were a huge number of them, obviously. We're getting back to making sure that we're, we're only at two, and that, and really, there, we're looking to say that we're not going to have a number, right? It's more of a, it's a conversation with the counselor, it's a conversation with the teacher, and a really individualized situation. The ideal is that, you know, students don't, don't elect that when they would normally get a grade because they don't need that, right? And, and that will be the new normal. The, the exception will be the pass/fail as opposed to one of the many options. So rather than making it, you know, a hard-fest rule of this many you're allowed to, or by this date, everything needs to be individualized and discussed with the counselor and the teacher to make the best decision for the student. But we certainly anticipate a, a large decrease.
But we, I, I didn't realize we always had that.
Yes.
And, okay.
Yes.
Even, even prior to the high schools merging, we, we had that?
I, I would assume so. That was...
It's not uncommon. We had the same practice in Arlington.
Okay.
And we, yeah, and it was, it was used to add some of that grace that I was speaking about. That has allowed some of our students to slip into some cracks where they are not used to the pressures of normal school. So this semester, this past year, we used it more than we anticipate using it next year. The numbers should go way, way down.
Can it also be, uh, used as part of an IEP process?
So, so a student on an IEP, that would be written into their IEP if that was an accommodation that, that they received. But any student, regardless of whether or not they're on an IEP, has the same options.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Another support person or person that would always be included in that discussion for that student would be the directed studies teacher and the case load manager, for sure.
So again, as Kathy said before, it's going to be a scrutinized process. We don't want to say it's not going to be used ever, but we're going to have a conversation with that student, with that parent, with the teacher, with the counselor, with the administrator. It's not going to be as easy to be assigned a pass/fail grade as it had been during the COVID years. That was one of those graces that was used to help us get through such a tough time.
How often, I, I, I don't want this to become a discussion about the G grades, but now I'm curious. How often are the requests denied?
From the past few years, this is my third year in the district, very rarely are they denied. We went back this year to it, during COVID, right? We went back this year to a deadline in terms of a, a date when they had to request it. The idea is that we don't want students not engaging in the work, waiting till the end of the semester, realizing if I can get, you know, to a certain level, I could take the pass/fail, right? As opposed to, because it, it shouldn't be used as the norm or just one of the options. But very sparingly had it, had it ever been denied, and, and moving forward, our idea is that that conversation will include so many stakeholders, including the student and the parent and the whatever, that it, it probably will not be a viable discussion if it's not a viable option for that student. Does that make sense?
It, it was a tool that we used during COVID to afford grace because we did not know how COVID was impacting a student or his or her family. So we gave pass/fails.
Authentic learning was more difficult to assess.
Right.
It was hugely helpful.
Yeah.
The, like, there's always the concern of the objective versus subjective nature of making those decisions. So that's, that's why I was asking.
And it'll be a team decision.
Okay.
So, you know, I know you probably don't have the comparable data, but one of the things that I, I hear recently, you know, since COVID, is grade inflation going on in the high school. And, you know, and I look at these numbers, and I don't know what to compare it to, that sixty-seven percent or sixty-eight percent either get a B or an A. And I, I don't know what to compare it to. I don't know if we have the data pre-COVID, if that was, if that's the norm, but, you know, that's sort of feedback that I'm getting. And I don't know if these numbers, you know, are indicative of what it was previous to COVID.
So I, I plan to spend a great deal of time...
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I'm...
No, I, I plan to spend a great deal of time reviewing the last three years of grade data so I could better be able to answer the question that you're asking, but I would not, excuse me, I would be far more alarmed or concerned if our standardized test data wasn't showing that our students were landing in the proficient or above area. So if our grade data was high, we had a bunch of As and Bs, but yet our proficiency was very low, I would be much more alarmed and much more concerned. Our staff will be engaging in a study of grading for equity, which is going to help us separate out a lot of the behavioral kinds of grading and make grading more about what students either know or what they're able to do, as opposed to you brought a box of Kleenex. So I don't know how much of that is in there. We are going to do the study. We're going to find out.
I appreciate you just sharing. I just want to thank you for sharing the grade data. I, I asked to see it over a year ago, and this is the first time I've seen it, so I, I really appreciate it.
I'm real big on it.
I, I just, following up on what Paul said. Also, you know, grades, had, we had a whole bunch of discussion about four or five years ago about standards-based grading. So that also can factor into this, where it's a lot more of what a student knows in terms of, versus extra credit, or did he not turn a paper in or something like that? It's what the student actually knows. And also, it'd be interesting, as you do your deep dive, to, on an individual student basis, correlate, or, you know, looking at all fifteen hundred kids and seeing whether there are patterns between the grades, the fast bridge, and the M step. And hopefully, you would hope that our grades, which the students are getting on a regular basis, give the same signals to them and their parents as the M step and the fast bridge.
Lisa.
Agree.
So, um, a, a couple months ago, we saw standardized test data for K through eight, and the virtual students vastly outperformed the in-person students in all sub-aggreg, aggregated groups. I know that the model we used in the high school made it impossible to keep that data because they had the option of being in-person or virtual on a class-by-class basis, basis, which I applaud. But I, I, at the beginning, I, I know that there were challenges that they had to overcome, but it looks like there was some benefits as well. Some of the, the groups actually did better post-COVID or remote, for whatever reason. Are, are you able to separate what might have been positive about remote learning, and will that be replicated in some form? Are we going to be able to capture some of the good things that we've learned going forward, perhaps in more virtual options, or what are there other positive, you know?
Yeah, just one of the things off, off the top of my head, when we talk about the silver linings of COVID, right? Things that we learned to do differently that we never thought we could do, or we always said, oh, we don't do it that way, and suddenly, when, when we're pushed to, we, turns out we can. And, and some of these things were huge benefits to students. And one of those things is a, multiple forms of assessment, multiple ways to assess students for modalities of learning, so that students can demonstrate their learning, whether it be visually, orally, written, and through our technology and the, the learning management system of Canvas, and all the add-ons that Canvas has, all the tools that, that speak to Canvas. So it's not, you know, the teachers not have to go out and find a, a, a cool website or a cool way to assess a student and then put in the grades in Canvas. They talk, Canvas talks to so many things. EdPuzzle and NearPod and different ways that teachers have found to instruct students that they've kind of needed to do when students were at home. I have found through classroom observations, a lot of students are doing those in-person with just more success. Allowing students that have their device in front of them in the class to still be interactive with their device and in-person at the same time. And I, I do think that that's been a huge benefit.
Okay, I, just, uh, one follow-up question, and I'm not sure if this stems from anything post-remote, or if it's a coincidence, or maybe it's, I, I don't know, but you didn't really talk about some of the increased summer offerings. I, I have to tell you, I mean, I learned about it from teachers, and they're phenomenal. We have a, an, a college prep essay-writing course taught by one of the IB English teachers. You know, some prep work on preparing your applications for college. Those, are those coming up later in the...
Yep, those are, they're not, they're not technically part of summer school, right? Those are the, the ones specifically that you're speaking of are at the end of the summer, run by our counseling team or set up by our counseling team, targeted for the upperclassmen, incoming seniors, and incoming juniors.
Are these all new this year, Kathy?
The, the, that boot camp's been done for years.
Oh, it's so, yeah, really, but by, by the teachers in the subject?
Correct. Yeah, they're, they're awesome. Right, the, these summer classes are, are more aimed towards, a vast majority of them are credit recovery, and, and some credit advancement, especially in physical ed and, physical education and health.
Okay.
Which gives students a really nice opportunity to open up room in their schedule.
So if it's not credit recovery, like these boot camps for college, what, or those aren't considered summer school classes?
Correct. They're not for a credit. They're not a course in that way. There is a, there are some 912 offerings as part of summer school that are not for credit, preparing for algebra and, and other classes that are meant as an intervention for students to help strengthen and keep up on skills over the summer.
Are those new?
Those, those were offered last year and, and this year. And a lot of them are, are run by in-person, a mix of in-person and virtual.
How, how do students know what's available so that, if they may want to take these classes?
So the summer courses that we're talking about up here, there's a, on our website, there's a link to summer learning and an entire brochure that goes through this for just high school, and then the K-8 options as well. The boot camp is found on the counseling page, and as we get closer, I'm sure it will be one of the tabs at the top as well.
That, that's really great. And talk about equity. I mean, for years, we were trying to figure out a way to help students who couldn't necessarily take the SAT or ACT prep courses, be able to get, you know, some of the work that they needed, get their essays for their college applications added if needed. So it really, really well done. Thank you.
And that's led by our counseling department. That was their idea, so.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Are you all set? So my, my question goes back to the equity, grading for equity slide that you spoke to. First of all, thank you for definitely identifying an area of gray for our district. And so one of the questions that I have is accountability. And so we've got something futuristically in place, but at the same time, where, where the bookends land? Like, you've got a teacher who's gone through this course, learned what to and not to do. Where is the check, where does the checks and balances fall at? And how do we determine if this is something that actually provides us with an outcome that we're looking for versus just a Band-Aid to say we've done something?
So, uh, I've been with the staff since Feb, February, yeah. So, February seventh, it was my son's birthday. Now, my interactions with the staff have been absolutely amazing. My interactions with students have been also equally as, as great. I believe that if we do a great job of setting the expectation for our staff, our staff is hungry and our staff is ready to move forward. It's just our responsibility to put the vision in front of them and set the expectation for us to move. I have not met a staff member to this point that expressed in any uncertain way that they are digging in their heels and are refusing to get on board and move forward. We plan to, to do this grading for equity, learning, study for the next three years.
And, and all staff will do it, right? So the summer, some of those things may be optional, but all staff will engage in the study of grading for equity, right? That's not an optional PD.
And we intentionally said it's going to be a three-year journey because we want to give people the time to be able to try, try, try again. But we're going to move forward, and we're going to figure out all the important components of grading for equity. That's, that's just what we're doing, and...
You, you talked about, Michelle, you talked about the, how we'll know and, and the data that we're going to collect, and some of the grade data that we presented today is kind of a baseline for us, right? We're going to be looking at it quarterly and semester, per term, with staff, digging into that data, using our data inquiry cycle with staff, so that we can see when they try something from the book, right? When they're looked at, anything around grading for equity, standards-based grading, criterion-based grading, and try something different, they can see the impact it has in the grades that their students are achieving. Right? So that data is going to be pulled and looked at by staff frequently.
Over time, this is also going to be part of the conversations that we have with staff during the evaluation process as well. How are you implementing some of these ideas? It's, uh, I forgot how many, it's on page seventy-two, but it's a list of ideas. Yeah, page seventy, you read the book? Page seventy-two? It's on page seventy-two. There's a list of different, no, it's on seventy-two, it's on seventy-two. There's a list of ideas that we're going to start to borrow and add to our professional practice. It's going to take time, and we're going to give teachers the time to be able to adopt these ideas. The last thing I want to do is make a bunch of veteran teachers feel like first-year teachers. That's not what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is give them an opportunity to learn and grow as professionals, just like any of us would like to be treated. Giving us an opportunity, give, give you an opportunity to learn. I think that our staff will respond.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could I just follow up on Michelle's question on the grading? How many per year, how many grade appeals do we have per year-ish?
I don't have that data at my, I would say from the last three years, finishing my third year, I can remember no more than five.
Thank you. So therefore, if there was a huge equity issue or grading issue in general, now maybe there's inflation of grading, in which case, parents or students are not going to bring that to the attention, but if there was a, a huge issue, we would have a large number of appeals.
Sure, and we're always looking to...
I, I disagree too. It's not, there's no correlation there.
We're looking at it because it's best practice, and it's our idea to constantly look in our grading practices as we do any of our other instructional practices and continuously get better, keep up with current reading and current professional learning, and bring our staff along as we move forward.
Absence of proof is not proof of absence.
Thank you, Doctor.
All set?
Thank you, Mr. Stroud.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. Finally, remember to take care of yourselves so that you can take care of others. And by doing so, we will take care of Bloomfield Hills. Thank you, and have a great evening. Go Blackhawks.
All right. Dynamic duel today. Thank you.
I don't know which one it goes back to.
I love those shoes.
I have to see where mine is.
For the dead-end student outcomes presentation.
Yep.
My turn. All right, so good evening, Board of Education. As you know, I am here to share our end-of-the-year benchmark assessment data. As you know, I am here to share our end-of-year benchmark assessment data. And this time around, I've added FastBridge and Fountas and Penel since those are two of our major benchmark data assessments that we report out to MDE. These reports have been shared in years past, but just a quick reminder, this is perfect timing as this is also part of our School Aid Act and part of a requirement under 98B that these are reported out publicly and also shared in our transparency reporting, which I'm going to talk more about at the end of the presentation. Let's go and get this going. All right, so just a reminder, just from last time, about FastBridge. This particular year, we've given this assessment in grades K through 9, literacy and mathematics. We gave it three times this year, so fall, winter and spring. So you will see some of that data. This is a computer adaptive assessment, which means that as students receive questions on the computer, based on how they answer, the question might get harder or go down in skill to see kind of like where the student is at. Obviously, we use this as a universal screener as part of multiple-tiered systems of support. It's supposed to help us identify kids that might be struggling with the current standards or skills in their grade level and help us identify kids that are in need of additional support or students that are at risk and need more intensive supports. Obviously, this is just one data tool and so we want to compare this with other forms of assessment, right? Because it doesn't tell the picture of the whole child. It's just one data point that says this child might need some additional supports. We love this because there are additional tools with FastBridge that help us drill down into that data and help us identify specific skills that a child might need help with. And so, teachers can put together small intervention groups and support those students with those particular skills. And then we like that the FastBridge offers family reports. I'm going to talk a little bit later about the difference between the family reports that families are receiving versus some of the data that I'm presenting to you tonight. The other data that you're going to see tonight is also some of our Fountas and Penel. That's the reading assessment, that's given K through 5 only. Students tend to top out at the end of grade 5. With those assessments, they go from levels A to Z, which start kind of pre-kindergarten all the way through 5th grade. And this is when a teacher pulls a child one-on-one and they sit next to each other. There's fiction and nonfiction text. The teacher helps select the book with the child. They listen to the child read and they're looking at those and observing their reading behaviors and recording how the child is doing, where they can look at their word accuracy, their fluency, how they're phrasing when they're reading. And then they can have a comprehension conversation to see how well the child understands the book and is it at a factual level or is the child able to make some inferences, make some connections and we can see where the child is at. It helps us determine where a child might need instruction at what level, like where we might need to pull them in a small group to guide them in skills at that reading level or also their independent reading level where we can provide them books in a book bin or in a book bag that they can read on their own independently. With, we trust that they have the comprehension influency at those particular levels to keep going as readers and that helps build some self-efficacy in the child and builds that level of reading when they have books on their own that they can read. So you'll see some of that data tonight as well.
Here, I have a question. Any reason we're stopping or Fountas and Penel stops at 5th grade as opposed to going to...
So, the way I like to explain is typically, reading goes like this. There's so many levels to get through in the early years of, in a childhood, in a child's education, that by the time they hit 5th grade, students are at Level Z, which is the highest you can go. And so, that's typically where it ends. Most kids are at Z by the time they hit 5th grade. I was going to ask too, I know last time we saved questions to the end, so just asking if that's the case this time or... What's the preference of the board?
I think if there's like a clarification point, which I think is what Sivu was doing, I think that's okay, but the general questions we'll save till the end.
Okay, all right, thanks. I shared this last time as well, this comes from the Michigan Assessment Consortium. And it's the idea that when you look at this, the bulk of assessment that happens in a classroom is really that, at that formative level. It's one-on-one with students where teachers are checking for understanding. They're looking for multiple ways to assess kids or for kids to show their understanding. It really happens inside the classroom. And the very small sliver that we're looking at today is just district assessment, right? That sliver down towards the bottom. And the idea that when we're looking at assessments, we try to have a balanced assessment in school districts, right? Where the state kind of tells us how we're doing compared to others in the state. District-level data kind of tells us, okay, how are we performing within the district? And how might we reach that state expectation? And then, like I said, the bulk of it happens within classroom and is formative assessment. Whoops, went too fast. This is just that quick reminder that regardless of what learning looks like in classrooms, we do this all for our students. And we continually, within classrooms, not just using the form of assessment data, but we use observations alongside other forms to really guide our practice and make decisions to best support our kids. I'm going to start very high level at the district level and work on, work our way down to the tiniest bit of data like you got last time. So this is just an overview slide of the data that you're about to see so that in looking back at this presentation later, you know what the upcoming slides are. So what I have for you first is our fall, winter and spring. This is our adaptive math. You see AMATH up there, it stands for adaptive mathematics. So this is our just school year overview. What you see here, broken down, is the percent of students that are on track in FastBridge. Every grade level has a cut score. So in the fall, for example, in math, that cut score in 4th grade might have been 206. In the winter, it would have went up to 210. And this spring, the cut score would have been 213. So in the spring, what it's showing, for example, if we were just looking at 4th grade, is that 81% of our students are on track, they're on grade level. They're meeting that proficiency cut score, right? Meeting that, they're meeting the expectation. This is the district, I'm just giving the example of 4th grade.
Yeah, just for clarification, you mean on track or low risk, right?
Correct, I'm going to explain each of the colors next. So, the light purple color is really the kids that are exceeding, right? So they're doing, they're well above the cut score. The dark purple are the kids that are on track, right? They're still above grade level, so they're on track. They're doing where they need to be in that grade level. So we have, like, for example, for spring, that would be 26% of our students. 14% means that there's just a little bit of risk. It means that those are the students that might need a little bit of support. And then, the 5% that is like the dark maroon color, the dark pink, are the students that are really high-risk that need some intensive support to get caught up. Typically, in terms of multiple-tiered systems of support, what is recommended when you look at all of the research is that your Tier 1, your core instruction at the classroom level should be meeting the needs of at least 80% of your students. That's on average. Students that might be low to some risk is about 15% that require that next level of intervention, which could be additional supports from a classroom teacher or a learning specialist or interventionist, maybe some small group support. And then about 5% at that top tier need the most intensive support. And so, when we look at that across the board and when we look at mathematics, we kind of have the perfect pyramid, which means our, if we just look at the district level for fall, winter and spring, we're on track and we have that perfect pyramid. That we are meeting the needs of the majority of our students at this time. The next slide you see is the same thing. This is for adaptive reading, so this is fall, winter, spring. So I'm looking at spring, 52% of our students are exceeding the target. 29% are on track for the grade level. They're meeting or above that benchmark score for the grade level. 13% need some support and 6% need potentially a lot of support or intensive supports. So across the year, you see that 81 to 80% of our students are meeting or exceeding the benchmark, looking at all of the purple. So what I highlighted in white for you is where I added the purple numbers together. And then, like, the 19% is where I added the 13 and the 6% for you so you could see the kids.
Did you mean to make that low, high risk or did you mean to make that on track?
Anything in purple is on track or above.
Oh, no, the grid at the top? It says high risk, some risk.
Yes.
So, okay, just wanted to make sure that that last one is supposed to be on track.
Yeah, the high risk, the kids that need, yeah. The pink, the pink are the kids that need support, right?
No, 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 no.
Some support.
Your grid across the top.
I apologize, that is my mistake.
Just wanted to make sure I was reading.
It's not supposed to say high risk.
Because the community needs to know that means to say.
They're supposed to be high, like exceeding. So I will edit that before this goes public.
As long as the community can hear that that means that that's on track, not high risk.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I will make sure that that gets corrected before it goes on our data dashboard, so. Yep, so basically, what I'm showing you with reading and math is the kids that are on track or above with all of the purple. Fall, winter and spring.
That's how I knew it was supposed to be on track, because of the color.
Yes. And it seems to be jumping on me. So I wanted to show you here because I think the last time I was here, you asked to see some national normative data. And so, what I'm showing you here, the difference between this slide and the last slide, is this is the percentile data, right? So what that means is, and I'll explain each color in a second. If you lined up 100 students, right? And you were the 45th in line, that means that there were, I'm sorry, the 50th in line. 50% of the students in the nation did better than you and you did better than 49%, right? You're like the 50th in line. It does not mean you receive, like, you got a 50% on a test and you got 50% of the objectives, that is not what it means at all. This is almost like looking at a bell curve where 50th is dead average. It's the top of the bell curve. So the way FastBridge works is the 85th percentile and above is exceeding, right? So that, so in terms of percentile rankings, right? So 32% of our students in the fall were at the 85th percentile or higher, which means those are students that need enrichment, right? So when you see that turquoise color all the way down, so in the spring, 31% of our students were at the 85th percentile or higher. So they were doing like 85% higher than the rest of the nation or higher. And then, if you look at the green color, the lime green, you see the 56, the 60 and the 56%. That means that that's between the 30th and the 84.99 percentile. Those are the students that are falling in the average range. And you should see in a normal classroom, a good chunk of the students should fall within the average range. And obviously, there's lower average and higher average. Students that fall between the 20th and 29th percentile across the nation, 5% of our students fall in that category in the yellow. And those are students that need some support. And then the red, which you're seeing is 7 and 8% between fall to spring. 8% of our students are falling in that 0 to 19th percentile. That means that they're at risk and need intensive support to get caught up, so. So across our K-9 testing, that's the percentage of students that are falling in that percentile range. I also put in there for you, like, where our line would be for our district, where the 50th percentile would fall, just to show you that if we were to do that, 75% or more of our students are falling at that 50th percentile, they're falling dead average. Sorry, went back. The next one is the same thing for AMATH. A reading. What I have for you here is our Fountas and Penel so that we can take a look at the number of students or the percentage of students that are on track for the time of year based on when we give the assessment. That's the one-on-one reading assessment we do with children. And obviously, we, just like FastBridge, we have cut scores for each testing window of what reading level kids need to be at to be on track for the grade level. And what this shows you is that in the fall, we tested first through 5th grade. The reason why kindergarten is not included there is because typically, most children come into kindergarten, they don't know how to read yet. They're still learning letters and sounds, they're learning how to blend their sounds together and just beginning to learn how to read where some students come in reading. But we don't give Fountas and Penel until students begin reading because it's a reading assessment. But what you see is that kids grow typically anywhere from 2 to 3 reading levels throughout the year. In 1st grade, they grow as many as 6 reading levels. That's the grade year that they have the most reading levels to go through. So this shows that we had 77.4% of students meeting the grade level expectation for reading in the fall. And then in the spring, we have 80% of our students meeting the grade level expectation for the end of the year. So students that are meeting or exceeding the expectation means that they met their reading level expectation for the end of the year. Students who are approaching expectations, that means they're 1 to 2 levels off. So for example, in a 1st grade classroom, if students are supposed to get to the Level J by the end of the year, but we have a student that's reading at I or H, that means they're just 1 to 2 levels off the end-of-the-year expectation. It still means they're on grade level. They just need a little bit of support. And typically, most children get caught up by grade 3. That's kind of the grade level where most kids catch up to each other. Trying to think what else. Obviously, students that do not meet expectations, they can be as many as 3 to 6 reading levels below their peers. It doesn't mean that they're not reading on grade level. They're just not at the end-of-the-year expectation yet. We have students that come into 1st grade sometimes that are just reading at a Level B, coming out of kindergarten, which is a little bit behind. And they might get to Level F or G, which means they've made growth and they've made progress, about six months' growth. And we're trying to make a year's growth or more as students go up through the grades. So now I'm going to get into some of the disaggregated data for you. I feel like I needed to stop touching the buttons because it keeps jumping on me. So with regard to literacy scores, going back to FastBridge, what I broke down for you is the grade levels. So this is A reading, fall, winter, spring. That's why you see three paragraphs side by side so that you can see fall, winter, spring. What you will notice here is basically we have anywhere from 80 to 89% of our students meeting the benchmark this particular spring. And I gave the example earlier, like a 4th grade, but this is with reading now. If they're reading on, or if they're reading on grade level, the benchmark cut score in the fall is 517. So if they get 517 or higher on FastBridge, that means they're on grade level or higher. In winter, it moves to 522 and in the spring, it moves to 526. We do know we could have still, children who are still on grade level that might get a score of 524. It just means that they are not at the cut score, but they're still on grade level. Kids can still show growth. What we do notice is there's slight decreases in 4th and 6th grade in reading, FastBridge reading. Early reading I took out because it's a completely different assessment where A reading, the kids are on the computer and answering multiple-choice questions. Early reading in grades K and 1 is done one-on-one with a teacher. They are short-timed, 1-minute tests that ask students to read nonsense words. And so, in looking at some of the scores that I see here, I'm still seeing 52 to 58% of our students are meeting the benchmark expectation for the end of the year in the spring. And so, I am meeting with teachers this fall to discuss what we're seeing in the scores. My guess right now is that it has to do with the processing and the early reading behaviors that we're seeing in some of, like, our kindergarten students, for example, where they're learning how to read. And so, they're just learning how to take and blend CVC words, consonant, vowel, consonant. And so, if it's a 1-minute timed test, there's a lot of pressure for students to look at those letters, process those sounds, blend them together and read a nonsense word that doesn't make sense to them. And if they have to get so many in a minute, that can put a lot of pressure on a child, especially like an English language learner who is trying to learn those sounds in their language, their home language or their native language, but is trying to process in English and trying to do that very quickly. And so, we're going to look at the use of these assessments as we come back this fall. We may make a decision to switch to MLPP, which we think gives us better data. Or we may switch to A reading in K-1. So I'm going to talk with teachers about that and see what we think, what gives us the best data to best help our kids. But my guess at this time as to why we're still seeing scores in the 52 to 58% range is that it's the processing of the reading behaviors that we're seeing for some of our youngest learners. Keeps doing this to me. So this is the same thing, the grade level breakdown for math, where we're seeing the 80% again. I wanted to get to the disaggregated data so that you know this is also in here for A reading and AMATH. This seems to be running on similar lines as some of our state assessments. This seems to be running on similar lines as some of our state assessment or standardized data, where we're seeing that our groups of Black, African-American, socio-economically disadvantaged, English language learners, and students with disabilities are our groups that we really need to target, right, as we're trying to bring up also our state assessments and trying to increase our student achievement scores. And again, the graphs are for fall, winter, spring, so that you have that year-long comparison with all of our groups. And then here, you also have the A reading disaggregated data. Same thing with the same groups. What I prepared for you also, and I'm going to explain Conants in detail and then allow you to look at the rest as far as the buildings are concerned. So the left graph, what that outlines for you, the top left, is the percentage of students that met the benchmark expectation in A math for fall, winter, and spring. So again, the cut line, everything in purple is the percent of students that are on track or above, and anything in pink are the percentage of students that need some support. So what it shows, for example, the fall shows that 86% of students were at the benchmark. The winter shows 79% of students were at the benchmark for math, and the spring indicates 81% of students were at the benchmark in math. The bottom left is A reading, which shows the fall. 87% of students were on benchmark or above in the fall, 86% in the winter, and 84% in the spring. So that's FastBridge specifically for Conet, and you'll see one of these. That is for each building, so I did almost like a little report card for you for every single building in our district, so that you almost had a report card for all of them, all of each site. The top right, what that outlines for you again are Fountas and Penal. So you see at Conet, all their students in the fall. Again, the fall would be first grade through fifth grade. And then the, depending on the site, right, Conet goes to fourth grade. And then in the spring, K through four, students at Conet, the percent of students that are reading on grade level or above. Think if there's anything else. So what I did for you again is just put together these report cards that are for every single site, so you can see the breakdown by building, fall, winter, and spring for A math and A reading. And then again, the fall and spring for Fountas and Penal. I think it's a nice comparison, especially when we're looking at A reading to see, okay, on a test, a multiple choice test, computer adaptive test, how are kids doing with their reading versus reading one-on-one with their teacher to see, are they correlating to each other? If our students are reading on grade level, then they should be able to complete and be on track with their FastBridge assessment. There should be some correlation there. So you have every single site. You also have Bloomfield Hills High School, which is just ninth grade. They do not give Fountas and Penals, like I said, that ends at fifth grade. That's where kids tend to top out in their reading. And then you also have Bloomfield Virtual on that data. I know I jumped quickly through the building slides. And then lastly, what I have for you is, just like last time, I know you guys love these slides, where you have the breakdown of all of our groups by building. So you have all of the specific numbers. I wanted to point out, you know, where I'm seeing some increases compared to fall and winter with some of our student groups. So what I have highlighted for you in green, for example, like at Lone Pine and Way, where scores in the fall, winter might have been lower for the students with disabilities. We're seeing some increases. Same thing with BHMS, with our English language learners, at 94% of students being on track with A math. West Hills Middle School, I know last time we looked at this, between the English language learners and Hispanic, there were some lower numbers. I think English language learners was as low as 27%. And we know in talking with West Hills that they have students who are newcomers. And so to see a significant jump like that is huge. The other thing I want to point out that we're noticing, I highlighted some scores in yellow because when you look at, when you have time to look at these numbers and you see, like at West Hills, the 27% for our Black, African-American group and 81% for white. To me, that really speaks to the fact that we have a large opportunity gap to close with our students and student achievement. And so we'll take time to look at these sites, and we're still seeing that big, that big opportunity gap. And then you have the same thing for A reading as well, where it's broken down again. Same, just like in math, we're seeing an opportunity gap, 43% for African-American, Black, and then 84% for white that we have to close. And yet, at the same time, we're seeing some significant increases in scores for certain groups. Like I highlighted the 81 and 100%, which really stand out at certain sites. So we're seeing some increases and some great things in the scores. And yet, at the same time, we're still seeing some achievement gaps that need to be closed. Another thing that I wanted to point out this time around, it's just some things of additional note, something I think we should all be proud of is, based on preliminary scores, and obviously, I cannot share any scores because nothing is public or finalized yet with our M step. But in terms of the Read by Grade 3 law, at this time, we have no students that meet the retention loss. We have no students that would be retained in third grade, which really speaks to the fact of how hard we work in our reading with our students. We do have some students that are recommended for supports. Principals have already worked to identify who those kids are to make sure that they have intervention plans in place, if they don't already, as these students return in the fall. The other thing of mention is the fact, I went through and took a look at, we are required by the Read by Grade 3 law to make sure any kindergarten through third grade student who, based on FastBridge or Fountas and Penal scores, says that they have some risk or high risk, right? Or they're not reading at grade level, that they are put on a reading intervention plan. In our district, we call those IRIPs, Individualized Reading Intervention Plan. We had 187 students on IRIPs and many students that exited from support because of those reading intervention plans that are done with families and with family input. So I wanted to highlight that to you as well. So some key takeaways, I think at this time, you know, we're on track as far as the district from a systems level view and from some of our building level views, with 80% or more of our students being at benchmark at the end of the year and keeping on track, knowing that that benchmark expectation increases throughout the entire year with every testing window. We know that our testing window was supposed to close on May 27th, but we know that we had teachers out with COVID illness at the end of this year. We had a number of students out, and so teachers were still testing into June because they were trying to get missed students, or they were out and trying to get caught up in getting all of their testing done. So we have not had time, because we were so busy these last two weeks, just pulling the data and getting this ready for you, to really digest the data with our data teams, with our MyKit team, with building grade level teams or with content teams. And so our plan is to then do that this fall, really come back, look at our spring data. What is it telling us? Should we change any of the strategies that we're trying? Or is it affirmation that we're kind of on track and we think we're moving in the right direction with some of the supports and strategies we have in place? You know, we have a high percentage of all students meeting benchmark, but we know that there's still some work to do with our disaggregated groups and closing those opportunity gaps. I think the good news is that we are experiencing some success despite the challenges we faced again this year with COVID, staff illness, student illness, even as we rolled into the end of the year. So what is being prepared for you right now is an end-of-the-year report. This also will be on our transparency reporting on our website, as well as found in our data dashboard. This really drills in even more than what the data that I've shared with you, where it has the building, it has each year, it has each testing window, it has all of the building-specific disaggregated data, rather than some of the aggregate data that you saw here today. So that will be prepared for you, as well as the public. And then as part of the School Aid Act under 98B, Mesa's put together a form where we have to list out for the state, the grade level data that you've seen, as well as the disaggregated data. So that report is being compiled and will be shared publicly on our transparency reporting for the state. And then some of our next steps include, as I mentioned, looking at the data in the fall to either affirm where we're headed as a district, as a data point, to maybe make some programming adjustments or affirm the goals or strategies that we have in place and see if we want to make any adjustments. It might also help us be some preliminary data to identify students that need support right away when they come back in the fall, but we also want to gather that with some other data upon their return to school, like a new reading assessment, a new FastBridge to see, okay, here's their spring data, here's how they came in. What might we want to try with a student? LST is going to take time to obviously meet with building teams as they look at their data to have better insight into their goals. It'll help inform our MyKit plan and it'll help them and us with the strategies and the needs of their students. Obviously, if we see a big need at a particular building that more students need support, we can obviously reallocate resources or people to make sure that the kids are getting the intervention and the supports they need because we want to see those scores continue to increase. Obviously, I did say this already, but got my notes here to keep me on track. It'll inform our MyKit plan and strategies. And then it's also going to support our continued work with our multiple-tiered Systems of Support Leadership Team that we work with to look at how we're doing our child study meetings, how are we supporting students, what types of interventions do we have in place to continue increasing those scores across the district? So those are some of our next steps, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. We'll start.
I mean, I have a question, but wherever you're starting.
Wherever you want.
I was going to start with Lisa this time. I usually start with you, Howard, so we'll switch it up.
So thank you for that really comprehensive report. I appreciate it. The earlier slides, I know that FastBridge can be broken down in categories like Mstep, so you can see which students are above grade level or, you know, and it looked like in the earlier slides, a significant percentage. What supports do we have for those students? What, you know, I know that we have a lot of supports to try to catch students up to make sure they're at grade level, but what do we offer particularly in elementary, well, K through, K through eight, for students that are at that? And there's a lot of them from the looks of it, performing above grade level to make sure that they're continuously challenged.
Exactly. So I would say in literacy, that's sort of an easy one because once we know where a child is reading, right, we typically have them at their just right reading level. So like I mentioned earlier, if a first grader is expected to end at J, but they're reading at KLM, like above grade level, then we're working with reading, with them at that level, so whatever reading level. So that's an easy one, and teachers do that very naturally. They have a wide range of readers in their classrooms. Like in a first grade classroom, you have kids that come in not reading. You have kids coming in just a little bit below it, like level B. And then you have kids that are like LMNO in first grade. And so they're always trying to pull small groups of students or meet one-on-one with students to challenge them at their particular reading level. And then the nice thing about FastBridge is if they're trying to figure out, okay, they're reading at level N, which is like a third grade reading level, the FastBridge report might also give them some skills that they need at level N, right? Because there's a correlation chart that's in FastBridge that also teachers can use in comparison with their Fountas and Penals to like help them keep increasing their reading level. So we do have a huge number of students that read above a grade level. So we're always challenging them, so I think that's the easy one. With Envision Math at K-5, there are enrichment activities and things provided within FastBridge. And then there's also some tech tools that we have and some apps that we can use. Beyond that, the learning specialist typically will work with the teacher to work on a plan of some other enrichment ideas or activities, or sometimes the learning specialist might see them to do some enrichment. And then beyond that, we do every single year, spring and fall, grade up placement. And so students, we post this publicly, we put it in all the principal newsletters, we post it on the district website. It's in District News. Any parent that wants their child or even a child that wants grade up placement can take that. And we look at their Fountas and Penal scores. If they have a standardized Mstep score, we look at that. Observations in the classroom, their Envision Math data to see how they're doing on their assessments. And if they're doing well, you know, we obviously consider kids for a grade up placement in math, so. So there's lots of steps along the way, but it all goes through our child study process. And it's typically done in collaboration with the teachers and the principals and the parents.
So the learning specialist, is that what we used to call the GERT teacher?
Yes.
Okay. The GERT teacher provides, or sorry, the learning specialist provides the classroom teacher with resources so that that classroom teacher can meet the needs of students right inside the classroom, rather than pull out supports or, you know, okay, just curious what it looks like.
Just to add to that, the K through five, looking at that math opportunity, that's going to be part of a summer and fall conversation about where are we at currently with opportunities we provide to students? Is it meeting the needs of those who are seeking advancement? And if not, what is it we should do, and then how are we going to communicate that out? So I kind of know where you're asking, and that's kind of where we're going.
So I'll just be really brief because I know we've got other things to cover, but as a parent of students, two of whom were graded up in math, it's not really the panacea. I think that it purports to be in that. The test, in my opinion, tests things like vocabulary and skills that students who truly belong grade up could learn like that, but they don't know the terms. So there's not a great way to be able to test what a child's capable of. It really tests what the child has maybe learned from a math tutor or a Kumon or something. And in my opinion, you know, maybe the students who really need the grade up are the ones who just learn very quickly and will be bored at the pace that their math class goes, rather than the ones that have had a whole lot of tutoring and recognized terms. So is there a way to identify potential without testing prior knowledge? Because talk about equity, I mean, you know, if you don't spend the summer in a Kumon class or with a private tutor, I'm not sure you're going to be able to do the grade up, and maybe you need it even more. I don't know.
I don't know. The thought that's running through my head is even with the Envision Math and even in Big Ideas Math, there's so much language in math, and so literacy is just as important in mathematics, and kids have to write their thinking, right? And so, but what I would say right now, and obviously, we're always looking at our processes to see what we can do better because that's part of our math equity challenge, is how can we get more kids enrolled in higher-level math courses? And what's the process to get there? But we do try to look at multiple assessments and observations and data points to try to make the best decision. Right? And we're trying to put that more in the hands of parents now as we move forward. Like we just changed last year the process from seventh to Algebra I, so that it's in the hands of parents and kids, right?
And I really do like the idea of.
We're definitely looking at our processes.
Yeah, I like the idea of it being inside of their own classroom, and especially in their own grade. It's, you know, it is problematic. There's different schedules when they go from one school to the next. There's busing considerations. It's, even if your child does pass that grade up test, it really isn't ideal. It would be nice to, like you said, kind of maybe develop with the learning specialist a way to meet needs of probably a greater percentage of students right inside their own classroom.
Absolutely, and that's what we're trying to do.
Good.
I would just speak, just as switching gears, as like, or switching hats really, as the Bloomfield Virtual principal, we had two fourth graders that were doing sixth grade in Michigan Virtual, and that was a great option for our kids, right? Because there's no busing, they wanted to be virtual because of health reasons, right? We had a fifth grader that was in Algebra I. And so I think there's ways or avenues that we can look at to make things work, to fit the needs of our kids.
Yeah, I mean, there's always the anomaly of, you know, the fifth grader in algebra. But I think primarily those that just maybe learn at a faster pace. It's here or here, there's not really a middle ground for them. So they're learning faster, but they don't, they don't want to take algebra in fifth grade or go to the high school for math in eighth grade or whatever. Anyway, I'm glad that you're working at the classroom and building level to fix that.
Absolutely. It's part of the scope of our work.
I had the same question as Lisa because parents have approached me as well with that similar theme that students who exceed expectations are not adequately challenged. So I'm still, again, you don't even answer me today, but that's a consistent theme that I've heard as well from other parents. That was one comment I had to make. I do have a question. If you track a cohort through different grades, do they tend to maintain their scores, let's say? Because right now, you see, you know, them kind of going up and down depending on their grade. But if you track a cohort through different grades, do they tend to stay at the same level?
I would say typically, in looking at benchmark. I would say typically in looking at benchmark assessments, like even looking previously at NWA, that's typically the case, that that same cohort typically stays at that same level of proficiency throughout their educational career.
Thank you. No other questions?
Hi. I'm standing here because of some pretty fantastical back pain. So, I just had a couple comments. It's great to see stability across the three testing phases this year, which really indicates stable... Right. Our first year in person, as well as new to FastBridge, and that consistency speaks to test administration, I think, as well as student ability, which really indicates stable growth, right? Because I think one of the bullets, the test obviously gets harder as the year goes on. So, 80% in the spring is like 80% in the fall, but it incorporates a new mastery of material. So, my only question slash observation is that this seems to be a fantastic, stable baseline, and whether you might use this information to create some goals within the strategic plan or within MYKIP, just like we have the M-Step. You know, we want to increase X much over the next X years. Whether we'll be doing the same with these figures.
Yeah, absolutely. So, we could use the FastBridge as one of our interim targets to see how are we doing along the way, and are we sort of on track? Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you for bringing all this information to us so fast, right at the end of the year. Thank you.
Yes, breakneck speed. But hey, you know what? The filter tool is finally working in FastBridge after a year and a half of begging them to fix it. So, that helped. It helps us now so that we can actually filter by demographic.
Oh, you couldn't do that?
No, we can do that. We had to do it all manually.
Student by student.
And by building. A lot of hours. That helped.
We call it word manumation.
Yes.
One comment. It looks like, I'm not sure what slide it is, but where you move from kindergarten, or you add the kindergarteners in, that kind of skews the data a little bit?
Yeah. I mean, obviously, when you look at the building data, they're going to be mixed in, right? But earlier, like when I showed you A reading and I pulled out early reading, I tried to keep them separate so that it wouldn't skew the data.
Okay. Now, my second question is kind of along the same lines as Siva's second question in that we see, or it seems that we see the cohorts continue along the same path. Do we ever, is there, you know, one of the designations was high-risk. Do we ever like move some of these high-risk kids into the low-risk category? Like, how does that work? And do we track? Like, how often we make that leap?
Absolutely. And I want to get, like, you know, obviously, FastBridge is a newer tool, and we're still learning pieces, and they're adding things based on our feedback. But they actually have a growth report that shows us if students are making, like if they're exceeding like normal growth, if they're making aggressive growth, if they're making moderate growth, or low to slow growth, kind of. And over 80% of our students are showing aggressive growth in FastBridge. But teachers can break down a report and look at, like, the benchmark score from fall to spring to show that students are actually making the recommended amount of growth in their grade level, which is anywhere from four to 10 points by the end of the year.
So, I think...
Keep in mind...
Regardless of where they start.
Those students are high-risk. You're then trying to look at a full data report of tons of data points, not just that one. That includes talking to the student, talking to the parents, and really finding out the root cause of where the struggle is, and then trying to intervene and create a plan forward from that point.
Right.
Yeah. The other thing I would add too, like when we look at the national normative data and then the benchmark data for the district, we notice that like our benchmark data, like about 5% are in that high-risk category, the dark, or the pink, the bottom pink, right? And then the national norm, about 6% are falling in that zero to 19th percentile. Looking at those kids and studying them myself over time, I typically find that those are the kids that are, they have IEPs or 504s, like they have the most intensive plans already, or they're getting the most intensive intervention. They tend to fall in that range. And so, like, or there's multiple things going on. Like, there might be an English-language learner who's also socioeconomically disadvantaged, and we're, we have an intervention, like the I-RIP plan in place, trying to give the kid the most intensive intervention we can to get them on track. And then, like, if we can't, then we're going down that road of, you know, looking at special education for that student, or an IEP or 504. So, as I've personally tracked some of those kids and have looked at, okay, why are these kids falling in that range? They tend to be the kids that already have the most intensive intervention. But definitely going forward to that's something we're going to look at with building teams to study who those kids are and ensuring that they have plans and they have the right interventions.
Thank you.
I have a few, I have a few questions. I guess first, thank you for actually adding next to each of the tests what is included, that descriptions, those descriptions are very helpful. So, just kudos. Keep that in there. My first question, in slide 28 and 29, where we talked, where you spoke about opportunity gaps. And so, first, my first part question is, how do you determine, or what was determined? How did you determine those to be the ones that you were targeting for opportunity gaps? The only reason why I ask that question is because when I look at similar situations for Conant and Eastover, one was math and one was science. I mean, math and science, oh my goodness, math and reading. There's no science here. There was significant issue, well, data points that were similar to what you identified for the other ones. So, how did you come up with the opportunity gaps that you selected?
Yeah. So, for example, like on this particular slide where I highlighted the yellow for East Hills, it was just an example. Like, that's something, I was pointing out to you that that's something we're paying attention to, right, where there's a 40% difference between our Black African-American group and our white group. But you'll see that trend. I see it at Conant. There's a 30% gap at Lone Pine, another 30% gap at West Hills. Like, to me, that that's cause for concern, right? That we still, that gap exists, and so that's concerning to me. But I pointed out East Hills just as an example, but we're looking at it all the way down, right?
So, are there individual strategies that you're coming up with, or like, what are we thinking as far as long-term plan to kind of piggyback on the question that John somewhat asked?
Yeah. So, as I mentioned, right, as part of our MTSS leadership team, we're looking at the data, like buildings are looking at that. They're looking at who those kids are and looking at what types of supports are being provided. As we roll into fall, we're going to be looking at that with the teachers, with the learning specialists, with the interventionists, to make sure that those kids are all getting the supports that they need to be caught up to grade level.
One of the, one of the things and the questions that Lisa brought up earlier to the high school about all the wonderful resources that we offer through the district, but I think we're using the same method of communication to parents, expecting for them to sign up or use those resources. But at the same time, you're probably getting a thousand emails at the end of the school year or the middle of the school year. So, you've missed an opportunity to sign up for additional remediation for your students or summer support packets that are provided by the district. So, I'm just suggesting that I know the summer learning is a huge, you know, issue for students returning back to school. And so, maybe is there a way for us to even permit kids to even check out their iPad? I mean, is there so much, I enjoyed my kids, my son's third-grade teacher because she put everything in Google Classroom, right? And so, he had an opportunity to do his test assessments and all of those great things to, you know, keep him, you know, studying at home. But at the same time, when you leave that tablet, what you've learned at school, you know, you've got to either sign up for, you know, the summer school or the packet, but not everybody does that. So, is there a way for us to maybe reevaluate for next year how we are tapping parents on the shoulder to say, hey, we have the support service that we're, you know, in classrooms, we talk about a little bit more in the beginning and the end, so parents know to look out for these things at whatever points in time? I'm just trying to think about little nuggets that we can do better to showcase, and going back to Lisa's point earlier about all the great things we have going on at the high school that some parents may have not even known about, right? And so, the same thing would go in our K-8 areas too, because we have a lot of support services, but I don't think we do as great of a job as we could to advertise those.
Yeah. So, thank you, Ms. Southward. We'll take that suggestion back so we can work on that, right, and always, always trying to improve. So, one thing I would say is I do know many teachers put together summer packets for the kids to send home. But if there's something we can do more consistently, I do know we've shared summer opportunities. So, we are running like a K-8 summer school for students. I know a lot of teachers will tap families to say, hey, you know, we're still, your child is still needing some help. The summer school might be a great opportunity. So, I know that they're tapping families for that. I wanted to go back to what you said earlier too about how we're guaranteeing that kids are getting interventions. Like I mentioned, 187 students in grades K through three were on I-RIPS. So, we know who those kids are, and those are on reading intervention plans. And I know that teachers look at their end-of-the-year scores. So, if a student...
Wait, you used the word, you said I-RIP?
Yeah. Yep. Individualized reading intervention plan, right? And parents are supposed to be tapped in all along the way on that because they're supposed to give input with that. But if a student needs to continue working on some things over the summer, the teachers have packets ready. We have resources from Oakland Schools that are shared on like tips and strategies of things to continue working on over the summer as well.
Yeah, I was, I was just saying, oh, sorry.
But I'm taking your suggestion about, like, what are some other summer resources we could offer?
I guess the reason why I'm, sorry, Lisa.
No, that was a great idea. I just wanted to say, especially sending them home with the device because that, I think, is also maybe key.
I'm just going to say, because you never know also what gaps exist at home, right? And so, as my, I'm still trying, I can't teach my son how to do precalculus, right? But that tool, when they go home, that's evaluating them and giving them feedback immediately, you don't need to have your parent there with you, right? So, I get to practice without mom or dad. So, I think we should really think about that, especially if the student returns or doesn't return. I just want to throw that out there.
I 100% agree. Sorry, I know I'm way out of turn, but if they have a device at home and we have knowledge from the pandemic about remote learning, there's no transportation to get students to summer school, some students who would need that. Maybe we can use some of the things that we've learned throughout the pandemic to our advantage. So, you know, if there's not transportation, but if they're sent home with a device, maybe at their last spring conference, you know, provided with some materials and resources, and they have the device, so the transportation's not the issue, maybe we could reach more students to close gaps over the summer.
Absolutely, and offering some virtual options as well. Do you want to add, please, something?
Paul?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. First, I know we talked about this last time. Is there any sort of assessment that we can get back on writing across the district that we can use? I mean, feedback that I get from families and some that are leaving the district is, we don't do enough writing. We don't do enough writing. There's no assessment in writing. So, is there any way for us to measure writing across the district?
Yeah. So, right now, we have writing pathways. Right now, that's being used as a classroom-level assessment. Teachers are expected to input their pre- and post-scores so that we can see growth. And that particular assessment is a rubric in narrative and informational writing, so that it's expected to at least be done twice a year. We know that that's not all the writing a child would do in a year. There's many forms of writing that they do. But we are studying those too, and teachers are looking at growth in terms of like formative assessment, like where do students need help from pre to post as we go through this unit of study, like in narrative writing. But they're looking at leads, transitions, punctuation, organization, grammar, endings. Does the story have a beginning, middle, end? How does it flow? And so, the rubric assesses all those categories, and teachers input their scores.
Is there any way to report out on that for us, saying at a K through nine level, you know, our students are where they should be?
Yeah.
Because I'm getting feedback from families that they don't think they are. I'm just saying, is there any way?
So, the writing pathways is given K through five. At the classroom level, it is a formative assessment. In terms of national, right, like above fifth grade, the only thing nationally I can think of is SAT and looking at the evidence-based reading and writing, and looking at maybe some of those samples. I mean, obviously, I report out the data to you and the disaggregated data, but in terms of looking at writing samples, that's something, like our content-level teams would have to look at and study to see what are some ways they can improve writing, because that would be the assessment, or the PSAT, evidence-based reading and writing.
In the fall update, would you like to see samples of the writing pathways, what the prompts are, student work from previous?
Or just something like an elevator speech. I mean, if people are saying this, or not saying, if I'm getting anecdotes from the community, it's like, no assessment of writing, that's feedback I'm getting while people are leaving. They, you know, they find there's no assessment of their writing, and they feel at whatever level, if they're going from elementary to the middle school, they're not ready. So, that's...
Writing pathways, is there a rubric?
It is a rubric. There's about 32 points.
So, maybe is there some way to summarize that rubric to do what?
Yeah. So, if that was the will of the whole board, I can add up the total number of points a child got on a rubric, pre and post, and then I can determine the average growth in points for each grade level. For narrative and informational, so if that's something the full board would like to see, I'm happy to put that together for the fall.
From the sounds of what Paul's saying, I think that it's not necessarily the assessment. It's kind of like give a break, like you don't have to do it as the, but someone needs to give, like, give a breakdown as to the curriculum for writing, like, as you progress through the district, and like, and what are some of the requirements? How many papers, perhaps, or, you know, essays you have to, you know, something along those lines, because I think people are confused, maybe, like, or not confused, depending on, depending on what you find.
That's kind of more of a syllabus or the requirements, as opposed to what Paul's looking for is actually how are we doing in the outcomes.
I mean, John, this is a great point. I mean, again, I, feedback is that not enough writing. So, you know...
Right. I don't know that it's the assessment of writing. It's the amount of writing.
What, what are you looking for?
I mean, I'm looking for sort of results where I could say, I can have data to say, yes, we are where we are in terms of writing. And I can't...
We are where we should be?
We are where we should be, compared to, let's say, comparable districts in terms of writing.
Yeah. Our best bet with that would probably be the SAT, evidence-based reading and writing, and see what we could pull for you for that particular mask.
That's the high school level.
Everybody uses something different.
Is it PSAT also, or?
Again, the feed, I'm giving you feedback, how we want to combat the feedback. People leave in the district because they feel there's not enough writing, just like, you know...
I think that's a good point, though.
Yeah. And then, to follow up on Siva and Lisa's point, people leave in the district. You know, we look at these numbers, which is great. If I look at just Conant, just happened to be the first one, 62% are exceeding expectations in math, or 55% exceeding expectations reading. Feedback, especially at the middle school, is people are sitting there bored. And then, they basically just leave, leave the district because we're focused a lot, which we should be, at people who are struggling. But the people at, let's say, exceeding expectations atop are lost. And they're just sitting there bored all day, playing with their, whatever it is. So, what is the, I guess, chain of, you know, if parents feel that way? Because you can't put it all on the teachers because they're stretched. So, what should they be doing to proactively get additional support and resources?
One of the things they should do is reach out immediately to their building principal with any concerns, whether it's about math, social studies, whatever the subject matter is. That should be the starting point, because each student might need a little something different, especially coming back during COVID, where some students had different amenities and access to different things, where they could work further ahead, and some other students are struggling. That would be step number one, is to reach out to the building principal and then kind of proceed from there.
From there, through the, okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And absolutely, I think the other thing they could do is even sit down with the parent, like the teacher, and if the principal wanted to be there as well, and they could even go through the FastBridge report, and it would show the skills, where the child needs the enrichment, and they could put a plan in place based on those skills and how they might support them that way as well.
I think it's, it's hard for the classroom. I mean, I don't know what resources we have, like additional resources to go, and you can't put it all on the classroom. It's impossible.
Right.
I mean, so, whatever, I mean, I don't know if we have those resources on both levels, on people who are, on students that are struggling and students that are, let's say, accelerating.
Right. I think what would be helpful, at least on the upper side, is not to reach out necessarily to the building principal, but, you know, when you have your first meeting with your student's teacher or teachers, depending on their age, like to indicate, you know, my child is, like, these are, you know, just to like reinforce, my child has scored this on these things, and like... has scored this on these things, and, and like, has really excelled in this area, blah, blah, blah. And not to really expect the teacher, I mean, the teacher has some expectations to differentiate for, you know, students of, of all skill levels. But I think what might be helpful, and again, you're, this isn't directed necessarily at you, but just in general, is to have a protocol for what, someone that that teacher can send an email to saying, hey, I've got three, these six, five, four students that are beyond where we are in math. And then, whatever that administrator is, can, like, there's a protocol for pulling those kids out to, to give them some advanced, like, work, you know? And the same goes for the, the lower end, you know, like, there's four or five kids, like, I've been differentiating, but they need a little bit more help, like, and I think we do a pretty good job with that. But I, I think if there's any resources available for that type of thing, I think that would--
So, that goes back to my comments earlier in the conversation. We'll be looking at, in particular, K through five, six, eight will be a little bit of it. That conversation about what are we doing for students, in particular in math, who need more, and what are we going to do as far as a protocol and resources available outside of the classroom teacher trying to differentiate? So, that's something we're looking at. The high school level's a little early, a little earlier, right? So, you know, there's a new freshman at the high school this year. She's in pre calc as a freshman, right? So, next year, she'll take AB or BC calc, AP stats, maybe DiffQ the year after, maybe linear algebra, maybe Calc III. So, it's already kind of sequenced out. But at the lower levels, because I know the questions you're getting, I'm getting those same questions as well, and it's not about reading, right? You can give different level readings to students and say, oh, you're at an eighth-grade level and third grade. You read this book. It's, math is what we're really talking about, and that's part of the summer and fall conversation. And we have so many new staff members at the elementary level in the past two years, making sure everyone's on the same page with where we're at.
And I, one, one other question. So, just feedback that I've gotten, and I know I was around for when we implemented it. And again, I don't know if we're gonna do a survey, or when the contract's up, but Envision Math, I, I haven't heard great things about Envision Math. I heard it's complicated to help with our students. I've heard from, actually, some of our interns that says it's not preparing people for the, for the ACT/SAT properly, and that came straight from some of our board interns I've had a discussion with. So, are we gonna evaluate Envision Math across the district, and I don't know when the contract is up, and, and take a look at that long-term?
So, that's something we'll discuss and look at. How many years have we had it?
Three.
Four, three?
Three.
Yeah, no, I was around when we rolled it out, and, and again, I'm not saying my, you know, the feedback I'm getting is, I mean, I don't know if we're gonna go out and do a survey.
And those at the high school level would not have experienced Envision Math, and it's been--
No, this is, this is, this is students at the high school or tutoring students and who are taking Envision Math, who have made the comments that Envision Math is not helping them prepare.
Harleen, you know, helped work that whole through, through the, the district about three years ago, and now it's Emily, who is just here tonight, is now the math leader. So, at, so to Paul's point, are we kind of doing an assessment in terms of how, after X number of years, how it's doing?
Well, yeah, we wanna, whether it's going to be immediately right now or a year from now, you always wanna assess the programs--
Yeah, just do a pulse check.
--for fidelity and things like that. It's also going to be, in my opinion, hard to get a gauge on something that we've implemented in the middle of COVID, and what's working and what's not working, and it's vocabulary-driven, and we haven't had kids in school to really work on reading and reading comprehension as well.
Point taken.
I know at my age, I would get to that math test, and there'd be that one-story problem that drove me crazy. Well, now, every problem's like that. You have to understand all the vocabulary, you have to understand what is being asked, then you finally get to do the math after the fact. And that requires a different way of thinking than the way I was taught to do math. I mean, I did logarithms by hand, right? My senior year, we got a solar power calculator I thought was the coolest thing in the world.
I did things, I did things with a slide rule, so, all right, fine, you're showing your age.
I used TI-85 and navigated that. I mean, so, it's also, it's a little different, but yes.
So, I'm, so I guess the ultimate question is, our curriculum, even though we implemented, do we, over a course, do we evaluate?
Yes, we will evaluate all--
Because I know surveys go out. Surveys to ask, you know, is it kind of hit in the heart?
You have like a routine, and you kind of look at all the different curriculum for, you know, ELA, science, math, social studies, you know, the elementary, middle, high school. I mean, there's a, there was a matrix, I think you guys were, had, which said you will, you know, revisit each one of these in a cycle over a decade or something like that.
Yeah, and there was some, already some conversation with Emily Handy and Kimberly Hampton at staff meetings this year, getting some input and feedback around, how's math? How's it going? So, some informal feedback, and looking at what the teachers are saying their needs are as far as the curriculum and other resources. So, I think that's just in the beginning stages, and I'm sure that that information will be available soon as we continue to study what we're doing in, in math.
And keep in mind, this was part of a shift as going to a school district opposed to a district of schools. Prior to that, you had different buildings in different, same building, same grade levels, doing multiple different things.
I, I don't, I don't disagree, having conformity--
I know, and I'm not disagreeing with you either. There needs to be an evaluation process. But, I, here's the elephant in the room I think everyone's trying to get at. What are we doing for students K through five, the six through eight, who feel they're advanced in math? How are we identifying them? How are we differentiating instruction then it gets to the point where they need to be math up? Are they going math up? How are we articulating that to the parents? How are we saying you can be prepared? Let's just get to the chase of what we're talking about, and that's what we're talking about, and that's what we're gonna be looking at this summer and fall. Am I missing something?
No, I mean, it's not just math. There's other--
I, I don't think it's just math either.
Yeah, it's not math.
That's one of the main ones I've heard. Reading, as Carrie's discussed, is a little easier to try to differentiate whether it's in the class or not.
I, I guess--
We're also looking at our students that are struggling, and our interventions that are in place actually working or not.
Right.
Now, as we start moving into that K through five configuration, one of the things that will be going on next year is grade bands will be working together. So, if you were all third-grade teachers, here's my problem. Think of professions, if, if you're a doctor, right? You go out and say, here are all the symptoms of my patient. Who can give me feedback? Right? We're all a third-grade team. I've got these two students that are struggling. Any ideas of something that's worked for you? I've got these two students, they really seem to get everything in whatever it is.
I just wanted to make sure we don't move too far away from Paul's question about the writing report.
Could I, could I say some, could I say something about that?
No, we, we can't move on. We have to still make sure we clarify the question.
I'd like to piggyback on the writing thing, because I, I agree with you, Paul. I hear it from the community, and as a parent myself, and I think part of the problem is that there's no more papers, right? Like, I can't go home and open my high school kid's folder and look at a paper, because everything is electronic. So, I, I think there is a huge invisibility window to us parents about how much writing is being done. And my suggestion would be to have on the website, I don't know what grade you would start at, maybe fifth, but definitely for high school and each one of the different English courses, how, how many papers, you know, will this student write in this semester? You know, how many of, if, if applicable, what subset of those papers are being line by line edited by the teachers versus maybe just a, a more simple holistic discussion? And, and so that parents can have a better idea of, yes, there's writing going on in this district. And, because, like, I'll ask my kids, can I see your pa-- you know, they'll say to me, I've been working on this paper for two weeks, and I'll say, great, can I see it? And they'll say, no.
No.
Right? So, we, like, and, and, you know, my, my kid's gonna be a senior writing his personal statement, and he says to me, Mom, I'm a really good writer. I can do this. And I wanna believe him, but I've never seen a single thing he's written in, in eight years, right? Because it's all electronic. So, it, it would be helpful just to have a, a writing, you know, primer for, for families on the, on the website.
And we'll take all that feedback and have a discussion about that as well.
Lisa?
I, I'm, I'm nervous about taking the autonomy away from teachers to be able to, you know, there are students who are gonna struggle with being able to write and complete one paper. And so, by having a check-the-box, this amount of papers in this grade, it, it doesn't really give them the flexibility, I don't think, to differentiate, but, which is really what my question is. What, what kind of feedback are you getting from classroom teachers about the expectation that they are gonna be able to differentiate for someone who's struggling in below grade level in any subject, not just math, and also accommodate the students who seem to be bored and breezing through things? Is it something that they need help with, or can they even do? Does it vary by grade level? I mean, are we putting too much on, are, are expectations unrealistic, expecting them to do it all? Do they need more support, additional help? I mean, I have absolutely no idea. It seems like kind of a lot to me, but I don't know.
Yeah. So, one thing, I just wanna remind everybody, the expectation of my presentation tonight was just to present to you our benchmark assessment data, which I did. So, I feel like we've switched our conversation. In terms of teaching, in terms of writing, and, and obviously, my world is K five, because that's what I've lived for so long. When I did writing workshop with students, I mean, teachers naturally meet in small groups with students on their writing or one-on-one, and they confer with student writers. And the idea is to try to teach the writer and not the writing, right? And, and giving them tricks of the trade that will help beef up their piece, that they can carry with them throughout pieces that, that they write the rest of the year. So, if it's improving their transitions, if it's helping them organize their flow of ideas, no matter what level of writer you have, like, if you have a, a student in second grade who is really having a hard time putting sentence streams together, right, complete sentences, you're helping that student, like, okay, how do we, okay, how can we organize these, right? You're, you're teaching them where they're at in their writing, right, and then helping them with their content and ideas, and then how to organize that, versus you might have a second-grade writer that, you, this beautiful, like, beginning, middle, end, they have a beautiful lead-in to their story, but spelling and punctuation, like, there's no punctuation throughout the whole story. So, the teachers are really differentiating in writing. Like, I think that's a natural K through five thing, and I, I would even say up through the grades. I know you're more second. Where you're really supporting the writer right where they're at in their developmentally, right? And, and trying to coach them, right? Like, it's almost like tennis. That's what I would equate it to. That's my analogy, is like, you're watching the tennis player form their ideas or formulate their backhand, and you're giving them feedback on, like, gosh, this is so great. Here's a strength I see in your writing. Let me show you something that would bump up your writing. Or, teachers will pull out, teachers usually walk around confer with kids, they have a mentor text that they pull out, and they're like, let me show you what this author did. Why don't you try to do like some, like, like author craft, like this writer did, you know? Or, let me show you my piece, or remember when we worked on this together? Because sometimes the teachers will, they do some shared writing as a class, and then students can lift from that shared writing they did as a class, or the teacher model or exemplar, to adapt their writing to that form or style or technique.
So, Lisa, to your point, I don't know if it's number of papers, number of writing exercises, right? Like, we're gonna do a theme exercise, we're gonna do a character, like, just, just so that we parents--
But there's fun writing, right?
You know, like, my, my son just finished junior year--
They wanna do a comic strip.
I don't have any idea if he wrote one page or 50 pages for his English teacher this year. So, he probably does have a syllabus that you can get. Okay. Go on his canvas. Okay, yeah, I mean, there's things-- Because I do. There's things I, I do not do that I probably would do. Get the canvas password.
So, I'm gonna, my last question, I'm gonna bring it back to the presentation here, and kind of related to what Pat said about all of the buildings getting on the same page. And on the last slide, or next to the last slide, it says, LST to meet with the building teams to gain better insight into their goals. What does that mean, like, on a building basis, when we're, we're trying to, like, build a, a district of schools or a school district of, whichever one is the one we're doing?
So, that means many things. One, one way that we look at that is the idea of our MTSS leadership team, that like, for example, Susan and I would be meeting with the learning specialists and interventionists to really hone in on their data and study, like, who those kids are, what they're doing, what they're trying in terms of MTSS. But then also meeting with building school improvement teams to kind of glean, how are grade-level teams looking at their data? What are they seeing as the needs within their grade levels, right? Meeting with content teams, like the ELA team or the math team. So, the idea is for us to be able to get in and actually talk with school teams in terms of school improvement and MTSS, and actually looking at their data and working with them, like, not just in our MYKIP core leadership team meetings, but actually back home at the building and hearing the stories, because we know that the stories about those individual students matter. Just like when I had a conversation with Wes Tills back in midwinter, like, this 27% for English language learners, what does that mean? Is that real? Like, why are those, right? And then, when they told me they had a number of newcomers this year, and here's what they're doing with them, and I was like, okay, this makes sense. It makes sense. Their scores seem to be matching what they're doing. Here's some other data points, right? And so, really understanding, like, what's happening behind the scenes and what they're working on, so that we have a sense of what's happening in the district in terms of intervention and improvement.
Big picture, our math literacy goals, we share in every building, right? So, it's no longer building A, what do we, what do you want your goals to be? What do you want to increase with math literacy? So, we're looking at that from a systems perspective. It will also be beneficial when we open fall of 2023, and we have our new configuration. That's gonna be actually beneficial as well. Trustee Kumar?
So, tremendous progress. We've got a baseline, or we're establishing a baseline with data.
And multiple data points.
Point, with multiple data points. So, now, we're getting the philosophical discussions of how we could address those gaps that we're seeing.
Correct.
And also, if we can, improve both ends of the spectrum and not just one end. So--
I, I would, I would challenge you to say, improve the whole spectrum.
Whole spectrum, fair enough.
Right, growth mindset. We want everyone to move forward.
Yeah, and I would keep in mind, three, or three to four years ago, we couldn't say that we had a guaranteed and viable curriculum in mathematics. Teachers were just pulling from the standards from multiple resources, so that we can say we have a guaranteed viable curriculum in math, K eight is amazing, and we're seeing that it is making a difference. When I'm seeing that we're meeting the needs of 80% of our students across the system, right, which is that MTSS pyramid, that's what tier one instruction's supposed to be doing, and then we can take a closer look at tier two and tier three, the students that need additional support, so.
I will say, with the summer that, and I think I said this when we were in COVID, the summer that we participated in the online learning during COVID, we had the most amazing teacher. So, I think that there are some great learning opportunities in the summer that can happen. I just wanna make sure I restate that. And then last, I just wanna make the recommendation that maybe we think about having a, a deeper conversation about this at a cowl, where we can, you know, kind of sit, not just ask you questions, can you go get this? We can actually clarify what we want, as opposed to you walking away like, am I supposed to be doing something? So, could we, yeah, you wanna say something before I ask?
I, I do, please. So, I've got great news.
Okay.
Our July 21st committee, the whole meeting, will be studying the calendar for the following year.
Okay.
I have a list of theme, things I would like the board to consider to be on there. They're just for consideration. However, please bring forward the items you'd like. We'll start penciling them in, and then we can share out with the team what we're going to be meeting on for the year. We all know then what we're meeting on, and then we have time as a team to prepare the documents necessary for those conversations that are going to be deep, meaningful about how we serve all of our students academically, socially, emotionally, to see that full growth of them as human beings, which is part of the MYKIP process, trustee Baron.
Whole child.
As we move forward, right? So, we're talking about putting systems in place and then being able to monitor the systems.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Carrie, I just, thank you so much.
Thank you, Carrie. Let's move on.
Because we threw all this at, she came to do a presentation on data, and we did throw all this at you, and so, I really appreciate it.
I've been waiting for--
Because-- Well, you know what, because--
Okay.
The story behind the data is really, I think, what's interesting to us, and you're so good at that, so thank you for being flexible and indulging that.
We skipped Howard, Lisa.
Howard hasn't had his turn yet.
Sorry.
So, let's give Howard his turn, and everyone else save your questions for another time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Don't even comment on Howard's question.
Oh, no, you can comment. Thank you. First, I just wanna give Carrie, Susan, LST, the principals such props, such compliments on this. Paul and I have been around the block now for eight years and 10 years, and the level of analysis, the level of data, the level of transparency today in 2022 versus where we were six, seven, eight years ago is just, you know, leaps and bounds. we were six, seven, eight years ago is just, you know, leaps and bounds ahead. Between the data that we're getting, the MyKIP, which I'll bring up in a second, thank you very much, superintendent Watson, so just congratulations for all of you for all the hard work you're putting in. You made a comment when you went through the appropriate balance, the pyramid, the upside-down pyramid. You made a comment that the district assessment, which is near the bottom, we do that to see where we are against the state expectations. We know, and Dr. Matlow and I have brought up numerous times, and I think LST has talked about this too, that the state expectations for this district are, you know, very, very minimal, so that our expectations are much higher. So therefore, we need the district assessments, this information you gave us today, not just to see how we're doing against the state expectations, which we will blow away, but to really give us this information and this kind of conversation, which is the only way we can really have this against not only the district goals that were established, you know, for 2026, I think, and then we need to then take those backwards to '22, '23, to forward to get to '26, but also what you're going to be doing over the summer and then the fall, which is the data digs and really the analysis of all the stuff, because you just pulled this together over the last couple of weeks. So what I would like to do, or what I would request of you guys, is try to connect the two processes. So we've got a whole bunch of data here, almost mind-numbing data of slide, 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 lots of data, to the MyKIP presentations, where what you're going to be doing in the fall is looking at the data and saying, we need, you know, so we have achievement or opportunity gaps, which is our, I think, our biggest challenge. Yes, we do have some of the things that were talked about, which is, you know, board students, and I'm just wondering, kind of connecting this, and I had a separate point, but can we use MTSS, level two of MTSS is intervention. Well, couldn't we have intervention on the high side, not just on the students that are struggling, but the students that need additional differentiation? So it's something, can we use that same MTSS model for not only the students that are having issues, but the students that are having issues because they're not challenged enough? As opposed to just the level one? Is that something that's can be brought in? So that's issue number one. All right, so-
That goes into the philosophical question, like-
Moving along.
This is a data-
Moving along, I'll move along.
Discussion.
So what I'm wondering is with MTS, with MyKIP, if you can, as you develop, look at the data with MyKIP and start looking at the strategies, start, hopefully, we can, one, look at the different, disaggregated data, and put strategies in to address those, because I looked at the MTS, sorry, the MyKIP presentations, and almost all of them did not really talk about the opportunity gaps. They talked about a lot of different strategies, but really, none of the strategies were really focused on the issues that the data is saying that we have. So, one, incorporate the issues that you talked about here into the MyKIP presentations, and then taking the targets that we had for 2026, and whatever targets we put in based upon the data digs, and start putting in targets of, this is by June of 2023, this is, you know, we had these gaps here, by June of 2023, we want to address the math gap here, and the, for African-American or economically disadvantaged, and we want to increase that by two points. And here are the strategies that we're putting in place in 2022, '23 to do that, so that when you come here in this presentation, or in the fall, you know, after you do the data analysis, you can then say, well, we had said a year earlier, these are the issues we want to address, and here are the strategies, and this is where we wanted to be, we wanted to be 3% improved, and we only came in 1% improved. Well, why? Well, we, that strategy, or this, or COVID, but be able to link the presentations on the MyKIP with this presentation and targets, because none of these, none of this here that you showed us had any targets. It was all just data. And what we need to start doing is bringing in the goals and the targets and the strategies, and linking the two pieces together. And then the final thing, different issue, so everything is traditionally, we've seen it for years, is grade by grade by grade. What you do there is, you keep the teachers or the instruction constant, and the students move. And so many times I have heard from here and statewide, well, you can't equate fourth grade this year versus fourth grade last year, because you have a totally different cohort of kids. So why can't we change the paradigm, and it was even discussed earlier, of using the cohort and tracking the cohorts along, so keep the students constant and change the grades, the grade that they're in, so we can start seeing the trend of how those, and obviously, some kids come out, some kids come in, and hopefully, through FastBridge, you can take the new kids, you know, the kids who left the district out, but 80%, let's say, if the kids stay constant, or, you know, or will, you know, be there from first grade to third grade to eighth grade, and we can start seeing the trend for those kids going all the way, the longitudinal data. We never, no one in the state looks at that. All you look at is, you know, first grade, third grade, eighth grade, 11th grade. Let's start looking longitudinally at the data. I don't know whether you guys look at it internally at LST, but it never has been shown to the board, and not just this board, but it's really statewide.
I have a few things to say. Do you-
But, and maybe it's because the data analysis tool does not allow you to do that easily, but now, with the technology, maybe we can do it.
All right, so Howard, I think I have three different responses to all of your, like, litany of questions. But one is, with the September presentation that I did, I gave you the trend data over time by grade level and by year, and so if that's a continued ask, I'm happy to do that in the fall, so that we can see over time trends with specific, like, as kids go from third, fourth, to fifth grade. So that's something that can be done, and the same thing with FastBridge. Remember, this is our first full year of invested FastBridge with our full staff, and so over time with FastBridge, that's something we can do, and I can have the graphs that show you fall, winter, spring this year, fall, winter, spring next year. We can do some graphs, like you're asking, where you can see, like, third, fourth, and fifth grade data, sort of, like, so that you can look with the same-
With the same cohort.
Right, right, exactly, that you'll be able to look over time.
But your statistical question, right? At the end of the day, what's the difference from tracking progress for a class of '22, '23, '24, '25, '26? Let's say we do our work properly and we see an upward trajectory. If you broke it, if you still broke it down by grade level, you know, grade 11 this year, grade 11 next year, you would still see the same upward trajectory, so-
As you're introducing new variables.
I don't understand what the statistical significance is of one group of kids over time versus all of our grade levels over time.
At 11 o'clock at night, we shouldn't be doing this.
And the other thing, too-
Maybe we can have this as a study session, to kind of look and see other districts and countrywide, and how, whether it makes statistics sense.
Right, and I think there's other data that we want to look at that's more actionable, right? Because, yeah, we want to see the trends over time, but really, like, a classroom and a building-level purpose of using FastBridge is to see which students needs to support and what skills do they need support with, right? So it is actionable data, right?
But that's for actual, for you-
And then in terms of the board, too, it would be nice to have it, what some of the tools and technology resources we're looking at is where we could look at it side by side with, like, attendance or behavior data to see, how is that impacting our data as well? Because that's a little bit more actionable from a systems level. So something that we're looking at doing.
And it could also be funding.
In terms of, yeah, and funding. In terms of one of your asks about the building and their targets and their strategies and what they're working on.
Yep.
We have a 102-page report that's being prepared for you and the state, that has the breakdown of the FastBridge with the state assessment data, so you have that comparison and reading in math, so we can see how we're doing, to see, is it a good predictor of how kids are going to do on the state assessment, and is it making a difference for us? So you have that, along with the strategies at each building, that they did from fall to winter and winter to spring. And so we're studying that as it relates to our MyKIP plan. And then in terms of our MyKIP plan, you mentioned that, and one of our big strategies is MTSS. That is an MDE-sponsored strategy that's part of our MyKIP plan, and as I mentioned during this presentation, we're working with those data dig teams, we're working with our MTSS leadership team to study how we implement MTSS across our system, because that will also impact our data. So it is one of the strategies linked in.
But I'm just, like Lawrence, when he did his presentation, he said, and then you said the same thing, we have these opportunity gaps, we need to work on them. Let's see those in the strategies from the different buildings about what strategies they're putting in place, either in individual buildings or system-wide, to address those.
You will see that in that 100-page report.
And then giving us the opportunity then, see the targets of, this is where we want to be, and then how we're doing against-
And we all, every single building is dialed into that MyKIP target to increase.
I'm sorry?
Everyone, real quick-
Can I just hear what Carrie said?
This is a discussion for the MyKIP, like, so when we get those presentations, this presentation is just a presentation of the data, and so what we're doing right now is we're delving into, like, far off-
No, no, I'm not, what I'm trying to do-
And everyone else has done it as well, and so I'm trying to give you a long enough leash, but it is also 11 o'clock, so let's-
What I'm trying to do is link the two presentations together, so they're not in isolation.
Well, I guess I did ask Pat, and this was my question, could we bring this to a conversation, where we can have this conversation all at once?
Okay.
So you've got a good point, but if we can add this to an agenda item to talk about it in July, and then put it on the agenda for us to have a better discussion and not tonight.
Right.
It might be a time saver. Imagine that.
I mean, it's the same reason I have the discussion related to the budget, in terms of, when we have that each presentation, if we don't bring up what the presentation's going to be looking like in a year from now, we'll forget. And all of a sudden, the administration will bring up back the same structure that they did the prior year, and we haven't really improved. That's what I'm trying to do.
Right, and I get that.
And I compliment you, because we have improved tremendously in the data analysis and this information, we just need to keep evolving to get better and better as well as the tools.
Like, I don't see Todd here, I don't see Sarah here.
I've got the superintendent here.
I know, but what I'm saying is, like, there are other people that are going to be involved in this process besides Carrie, who's job is not, the things you're asking her-
I'm talking to the superintendent.
That's okay.
All right, so we're going to move on.
You're fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. Keep in mind, the data results just came back, like, what, I mean, this is not even-
Well, no, of course, we're going to see a lot more information in the fall.
It's not like you're not going to get to talk, you're up next on the agenda, Howard, so.
We had 13C?
13C.
All right, all right. So the superintendent evaluation committee had two tasks. One was to talk with the board and the superintendent about our current year evaluation, and we have now migrated to our second task, which is looking at the evaluation process for 2023. So the superintendent evaluation committee is John, Michelle, and myself. We met on Monday this week, June 20th. We had about an hour-long meeting. We went through, looking at the MASB tool and doing some compare and contrast of that versus some of the other alternative evaluation tools. And we finished the meeting saying that we will meet again in about a month after the committee has a chance to absorb and digest some of the material that was presented. We're hoping to have, not, you know, crossing our fingers, that some sort of final report to the board in September, which would allow the board the ability to make a decision before the end of the year, hopefully, you know, in September or October, so that if we did decide to change tools, that we would have a couple of months to give that direction to the superintendent, talk to the outside companies who would do training, so that we could get up to speed by January of the next year. So we're not, hello? Yep. So we're on a kind of a slow timetable of meeting, kind of on a month at a time, but there is a lot of material to absorb, so I think the timing will work out over this, as long as my compatriots on the team, you know, will meet in July and then possibly in August, in preparation for a September review with the board.
Thank you, Howard. All right, let's get through this board business.
I would like for my two committee members to get confirmation that the date that I put out is acceptable, so I can send a link. So, I sent an email, just get back to me.
A, approval of the roofing contract. Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Education award Conan Way Roofing Bond Projects to KGP Roofing and Sheet Metal Inc. with a bid of $812,400 and a voluntary alternate of $62,000 for a total award of $874,540 to be funded by the bond fund.
Second?
Paul, did you have a couple things to say about the-
Yeah, real quick, so back in February, you did award Bid PAC 5 Roofing. The contractor that was awarded Strang Roofing, unfortunately, was not able to get a performance labor material bond, which is required both by specifications and by law. The $46,500 square feet for both roofs at both Conan Way, that equated about $15 a foot. The award that you're looking at this evening would be about $18.80 a foot. Should you decide to not take the recommendation, actually go out for bids, what we're seeing in the marketplace right now is $35 to $40 a foot for roofing. So that would put this roof right at about $1.6 to $1.8 million. Just going to put some perspective on it, so.
Move along, move along. Say yes.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. B is approval of bond program change order number 15.
I move the Board of Education approve the requested change orders for North Hill Sanitary Piping in the amount of $152,904.13, and the additional items, Bloomfield Township has requested for water and storm in the amount of $382,160.53, totaling $535,64.66 to be funded by the bond fund. Paul, I was wondering, is there a second?
Second.
Just real quick, we were apprising this a couple weeks ago, but for the, for the community's sake, if you want to explain, kind of-
Could you give a brief?
Absolutely. So the underground sanitary piping, it was initially installed with the construction in the 1960s. When we started putting in the new connections to it, the pipe actually crumbled, so there'd be a field condition. That was the $152,904. The other one is the water main changes in the storm sewers, really to comply with the existing design, was obviously antiquated to what Oakland County's Storm and Water Management System is now. So again, it's requested by the township to approve those. So again, that was something that we did work with the community as a whole, so that'd be a request by authorities having jurisdiction for those two going forward, so.
So is it the case that the township comes to inspect the construction? Like, I'm just wondering how all this type of thing evolves.
Sure, sure. So for item number 10, the underground piping, that was really just a field condition as the contractor was installing it. The township will actually come out and do an inspection during installation, as well as a final. The second one was actually really for the reviews by Eagle, as well as the township's Hubroth and Clark's consulting engineer requesting those revisions for both that water main and underground storm sewer. So again, they'll also come out and inspect that upon final completion as well.
And do we get inspected for things like electrical safety and fire, and I'm sure fire code, but-
Correct, yep. So good news is, the township is actually having the authority and jurisdiction for both the building permit and fire suppression, so again, you'll be meeting with the fire inspectors. They've actually been involved through the design process, which we kind of highlighted with the Conan Way phasing. But yeah, the building inspector is looking at mechanic, electrical plumbing, as well as building, and then obviously- as building, and then obviously, you have your fire inspections that go part of that life safety as well, so very well covered.
Howard. One fascinating thing I learned during the high school build is that we are not governed as a school district by township ordinances, we are governed by the Michigan Department of Education. Am I right still?
It's actually the Michigan Building Code, adopted in 2017, so the township may have, let's say, a specific requirement for something, i.e., exterior materials. As long as it complies with Michigan Building Code, that's the rules and regulations that the district would follow.
Because we had a whole discussion about the signage and the electric sign outside of the, the high school, and the township had an ordinance saying we couldn't have it, but we kind of.
You're zoned SP, special purpose, so it does follow that designation.
So, but we do have the township basically doing these inspections, we don't have anyone from the state doing it, the township. And the second thing is, I did do a communication protocol to the superintendent and Paul and to Tina. The 500,000 here was incorporated in the presentation we saw with the graphs, with the contingency, so these numbers, even though we have not approved it until a few minutes from now, that number's already incorporated into the presentation we just saw.
Presumptively.
Yes. He assumed that it would be approved, which I'm sure it will be.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes seven, zero. Thank you much.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks for sticking around.
Sorry, I didn't realize you were sticking around for that, or I would have tried to bump it up for you.
Have a good evening.
What's left of it?
Good morning.
All right, C, approval of fiscal year 2021, '22, final budget revisions. Motion.
Proposed by Tina Kostick, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education adopt the final budget revisions for the fiscal year 2021, '22, as detailed in the attachments and summarized in the table below. General Fund revenue and transfers in of $100,255,047, along with expenditures and transfers out of $103,153,819, with a net revenue under expenditure of $2.898,772. So that's a deficit. On the special revenue fund side, revenue and transfers in of $22,109,702, offset by expenditures slash transfers out of $21,559,927, for a net revenue income of $549,775.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Oh, along that line, just so you know, I did get contacted by Plant Moran, or Plant Moran this week, and had a meeting with them. Per their request, they always contact a board member and ask whether there are any issues or any concerns. I don't know whether any of the other board members have been contacted by our auditor. Tina, you're aware that I got contacted by Plant Moran?
I'm aware that you were selecting one or more.
Right, so that is a typical process. I was contacted last year and now this year, so I just wanted the board, just wanted the board to be aware that they, because we basically are hiring the auditor, that they ask us whether we had any concerns. If, if you guys have any concerns, that should be fed back to the auditors before they come in to work with Tina and Karen prior to the October review with us, please let me know. But I, I did not bring up any issues.
Thank you. Okay, D, approval of resolution for adoption of the fiscal year 2020.
Yes.
Oh, you didn't vote?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was after the fact.
My bad, sorry.
Did you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we get that, seven, still seven, zero. So D, approval of, approval of resolution for adoption of the fiscal year 2022, '23 budgets and 2022 tax rates.
In accordance, you want to say it, Michelle? Okay, okay. In accordance with the Uniform Budget and Accounting Act, I move that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution and related original budgets for fiscal year 2022, '23 for the general fund and the special revenue funds as required by law and summarized as follows. For the general fund, revenue transfers in of $102,856,726, expenditures transfers out of $103,258,689, for a net negative revenue under expenditures or deficit of $401,963. And then for the special revenue funds, revenue transfers in $22,845,380, expenditures transfers out of $22,976,830, for a net revenue under expenditures, a net deficit of $131,450.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Wait, excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
I, I just want to, we, when we were talking about the budget for 2022, '23, and in the presentation that Tina gave us, I just want the board to realize that there is, for '23, '24, which is the next fiscal year, we have a $2 million loss, so that if we have any concerns about a $2 million loss, we should be talking about that throughout the year, and not really having that conversation in May of 2023, where we all of a sudden say, well, we got a $2 million loss, and then some of us say, well, we talked, you know, it was shown to us last year, we didn't have a problem with it, so, you know, it's sort of not speak now forever, hold your peace, which is not true, but just, let's have our eyes open that even though we only have a $400,000 loss this year, it does escalate next year, so something to think about.
That's an excellent point.
I think that the board has resolved to, to take a look at that earlier in the process. With that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero. And the final, but not last thing on the agenda, because we always do our agenda setting, so don't jump up after we approve this, but the final thing.
Don't we do agenda?
No, no, we'd like, just make sure that, like.
Gotcha.
Michelle reminds me every time that this is what we do, so just FYI, don't, don't jump up and leave right away. All right, so E is approval of amendment to the 2022, '23 budget. Our, I'm sorry, board meeting agenda. Do I have a motion? Anyone, Paul, you want to read this one?
Sure. I move the Board of Education amend the 2022, 2023 meeting calendar reflect the following changes. A 7:00 p.m. call to order on July 21st, the August 25th regular meeting be moved to the date of August 24th, heads of conflicts with the PTOC District Welcome Back Event. A 7:00 p.m. call to order on September 8th is for the location, the meeting be moved to Blue Hills Middle School, and I'm assuming this is 2023. The May 25th regular meeting be moved to the new date of May 24th, heads of conflicts with the International Academy's commencement ceremony.
Second.
I do want to say that August 24th is my birthday, Rebecca, that's kind of disappointing.
Howard's going to make cobbler.
Disappointing that you didn't think about that when you moved the meeting to that day, but that's okay.
I'm making cobbler over the weekend for some relatives of mine.
Maybe briefly after this, about another conflict that we may need to look to amend for next year. Just real quick, I need less than 30 seconds, I'd end of the board meeting if possible, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a second?
Yeah, we had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
So now, this piece about looking at the next agenda, I did not know that we were doing that. We had been doing it where we did the cow, we do two at a time. If we're going to do that, and I don't, I understand why you want to do it's another bite at the apple, which is fine, but if so, if Rebecca could add that to the agenda, because I did not prepare tonight, I normally look at what's there, and I had this problem a month ago where I didn't, I don't, and we sort of, on the fly, kind of said, well, what are we doing next time? I don't know what it is.
We've done it before, and essentially, it's just a, hey, do we need to add anything to one of the next two agendas?
I have no problem. What I'm saying is, if we can just put it on the agenda here, so that I can prepare for it, that's all.
Okay.
That's all.
Does anyone have anything that they'd like to add? Is, July's our meeting, is like, with a calendar meeting?
Correct, I do have one thing I'd like to add, if the board will consider it. Update on the transportation site, Trustee Southward and I met with a whole team of people and physically walked the site, and we've asked, Trustee Southward and I asked the bond team to put together kind of a high-level diagram of what it potentially could look like at the site that we're considering, so that we can have further conversation on it, so that if it is going to be the site we use, the quicker we can get things purchased, the more money we're going to save, and the sooner we can get it done.
Would that need, because we had a presentation at the last committee of the hall, would that need a board vote to actually change from where it was to East Hills?
I, I don't know, we can look at that.
Because what that's doing, again, time back to what we did with Mr. Wills, it would take some money out of the, the budget, or the bond budget, and put it into contingency.
So Trustee Barry, we're all operating on the information we have at hand, right? So we presented the information we had on hand. On 21st, we're going to have more detailed information, we'd like to bring it forward to have that conversation.
I'm just saying, should we actually, not just a review of it, but actually do a vote?
So this is an agenda item, so, and it's going to be a cow, we usually don't vote at the cow, so let's have that discussion at the cow.
But maybe the July, but the July board, if we, if that, if we decide to do a vote, we can do it at the July board meeting.
Right.
A month from now.
Of course.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so it says that the, we're at the Losher site.
I believe we're doing the tour, then we're coming back here afterwards, and the tour is, everyone is welcome, but if the schedules don't allow, completely understand. We can schedule it separately.
Just want to make sure I remind everyone, that's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And those.
Paul, do you want to discuss the consultant at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, at the next meeting, I could, I could bring it up.
Bring it up at the next meeting, okay. And, and when we do those site visits, knowing when, when I did this at the high school, you have to bring your hard hats, or should bring your hard hats with your name on it, no open-toe shoes, no sandals, you might get muddy, so just be prepared. I mean, it's a construction site.
Thanks, Howard. You're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.